For tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, February 27th. February's almost finished. In the Noak Room of the Town Office Building located in Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire to consider a variety of things. And we start off by introducing the board. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board. And to my left...
Nancy Belanger. I am the Select Board Representative.
Thank you.
Glenn English.
And?
John Gruder.
Marty Kennedy.
Dean Hubbard.
Last two gentlemen are alternates. I'd ask if Matt, you'd be willing to... I know you're going to recuse yourself from the first seat, but I'll appoint you as acting. Would you like to act tonight, sir?
I would like to act on the Front Street petition, not on the other one.
Okay. Well, I'll wait to appoint you at that time. First in order of business, Willie Crete Company is requested to have their case continued again. And we have a letter from them making that request and a motion that David suggested. Glenn, would you like to make that motion, please?
Sure. I move that the request of Willie Crete Company Planning Board Case Number 22-3 for a continuance of their application to the April 24th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM in the Noak Room in the Exeter Town Office Building be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think a voice vote is filed for this. Those in favor, please, if they're saying aye.
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 Et nays.
All say.
Abstentions. Motion carries. So we'll seat them. I think next time around, we'll ask them to come in. Dave, if this... I think next time around, we'll ask them to come in and explain their need.
On the 24th?
Well, if they want to be extended again.
Correct. I will let them know that. Thank you.
Okay. So we're moving the second item on the agenda, which is continued public hearing on the application of Green and Company for the site plan review and wetlands conditional use permit for proposed mixed-use neighborhood development, MUND, project consisting of a townhouse development off Haven Lane and 32 three-bedroom units, a four-story mixed-use building on Portsmouth Avenue having 4,418 square feet, commercial use on the first floor, and 36 one-bedroom units above, and one separate duplex structure with three-bedroom units on Haven Lane. Along with associated site improvements, subject property is located at 76 Portsmouth Ave. in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Route Number 65-118, and is Planning Board Case Number 2-18. And Dave, would you like to start us off, please?
Thank you. Just as a recap, the applicant presented their proposal to the Planning Board at the December 19th meeting, where numerous comments and concerns were raised by the board and abutters. A sitewalk was conducted on January 9, 2025, and the applicant was scheduled to return to the board on the January 23rd meeting. The applicant appeared before the Conservation Commission at their January 4th meeting to present their wetlands conditional use permit, and after consideration, they requested a continuance to a future meeting to provide them adequate time to reassess the project design and to address the commission's concerns. The applicant subsequently requested a continuance of their application before the Planning Board to the February 27, 25 meeting to allow them to return to the Concom earlier this month. The applicant did receive a positive recommendation from the Conservation Commission, and that letter is included in your pack. It's dated February 12th, where the commission reviewed the wetland conditional use permit application at their meetings on January 14th and revised plans on February 11th, and voted six to one that they have reviewed the application and have no objection to the application and recommend the following conditions be added to their approval, where they list two conditions that are in the memo. The applicant is requesting two waivers from the Board Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations as outlined in the waiver request letter from Jones and Beach dated January 13, 2025, and that was provided in previous meeting materials. The applicant has submitted revised plans and supported documents dated February 14, 2025, which are enclosed for your review. Due to the changes that have been made since the prior TRC meeting, we felt when we got these plans last week, we felt another technical review committee was warranted due to the changes in utilities and grading and design and so forth, so we held that this morning. We had... We generated a host of comments, you know, discussed with the applicant, thought it was a positive meeting. There's still things that will be... The plans will be revised and resubmitted again, but we had discussed that, that was, you know, the applicant wants to move forward tonight and continue that discussion, and particularly one discussion about traffic and the analysis and so forth. So, you know, I'll let them speak to that. And I'll have a review letter. We'll have a TRC comment letter, but it was this morning, so we haven't issued it yet. And UEI sent a review comment number three letter that we provided the applicant with this morning at the meeting, but you haven't seen that, but we'll forward that on once we receive it electronically from Underwood Engineers.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
A couple of comments. If you feel crowded and you're here for the next case, the room downstairs is open for your comfort and relaxing, with the TVs not on down there for the meeting, so you're of course welcome to stay here. It appears everybody has a seat, so I think we're okay. But if more people arrive, then maybe if some folks are waiting for the next case, you could adjourn down there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As I did the first hearing, I'd like to recuse myself from this because my firm did the traffic review for the town on this project.
Thank you very much. The other thing I want to say is, again, we have two cases tonight, so I want to spend about an hour and a half on each one. So as 8:30 rolls around, I'll probably be asking for a motion to continue the case. And then this next case will have till 10 o'clock, and again, we'll do the same thing. Reasonable hours for reasonable people at a reasonable time. So that's where we're at. So who's speaking then tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, I'm Attorney John Boson from the Law Firm.
Speak a little louder, please. I'll bring the microphone closer to you. Thank you.
Attorney John Boson, behalf of the applicant from the Law Firm, Donahue, Tucker, and Chindela. And I'm going to speak along with Paige Libby from Jones and Beach Engineers. And, you know, we're here tonight seeking site plan review and a conditional use permit for the project under the newly adopted mixed-use neighborhood development, or MUND, as it's been referred to. With me tonight, we have Paige Libby from Jones and Beach, also of our traffic engineer, Kim Zavartin. And also from the owners group, we have Jenna Green and John O'Neill. This project has changed a lot since you first saw this project conceptual back in July. The project now involves a 34-unit townhouse-style development off Haven Lane, a four-story mixed-use building on Portsmouth Ave. with a commercial use on the first floor and 36 one-bedroom units above it. Briefly, by way of background, when this project first started last July, the original plans were for three large buildings, a triplex total unit count of 124 units, the commercial space on Portsmouth Ave. With concerns raised by abutters over traffic and building height, wetlands, drainage, and loss of the wooded buffer, the plans were redesigned and scaled back to a 70-unit project that you saw last December, which we all felt was more harmonious with the neighborhood. As Mr. Sharples said, we did a sitewalk. There were some revisions to the plans. Paige has made some revisions that she'll go over with respect to the buffers. And then on February 11th, we did go to the Conservation Commission, where it was voted to have no objection to the proposal, with a few conditions that the applicant is in agreement with. The applicant now believes, based on the feedback from staff, from TRC, from this board, that this project has improved to the point where it's ready for your continued consideration. We understand that there's still some outstanding issues, but we thought it was important that you hear the plans tonight. And I've read the public comment. I'm mindful of the fact that the abutters still have concerns, which is true for many developments that we're involved with. But I also think it's worth noting that this is a large parcel of land. It can accommodate a much larger project by right. This site could easily handle 120 units. We're down to 72 units, which is more modest, especially in light of the housing crisis we find ourselves in. I also think it's worth pointing out that the types of uses that are also permitted on this site, you know, could be a hotel, could be a car dealership, could be a busy medical practice, an animal hospital, a childcare center, all uses that generate a lot more traffic than this project will generate. As I said, I think this is a modest development that's been thoughtfully developed. It's a nice transition from the townhome-style units on Haven Lane to the tallest structures on Portsmouth Ave. The last point I want to make before we turn the podium over to Paige is that this... The rear parcel is 5.61 acres. That amounts to a density of about one unit per 7,200 square feet. Most of the lots on J.D. Hill are in the range of 8,000 square feet, so a very similar density than what already exists. I know the MUND has no density requirements, so I'd ask you to be mindful of that as well. So with that background, I'd like Paige to walk us through the plans, and we'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Paige Libby, again, with Jones and Beach Engineers. So we were last here in December, like Dave had noted. Then we did the sitewalk in early January, and since then, we've had two Conservation Commission meetings. So we've made some changes as a result of TRC comments that we got, which were actually before the last Planning Board Meeting, as well as kind of a back-and-forth with the Conservation Commission. But I would say the most substantive changes to the plans came out of the first TRC that we had. And actually, you haven't seen this plan set, but the site plan was passed out during the sitewalk, for those of you who were there, and what was staked during the sitewalk was what's shown on this plan, with the exception of a bunch of buildings moving all around. So the road itself was what you saw during the sitewalk. But the major changes that have been made since the last plan set that was presented in December is that we added the second access off the end of Haven Lane, so the road is now looped all the way around. And then the changes that were made as a result of the Conservation Commission recommendations were moving some of these buildings. This building was at one point across the road, but we shifted it in order to get it out of the wetland buffer. And then there's three buildings, this one, this one, and this one, that we were able to pull closer to the road and provide parking across the road from them instead of in front of the units, and that allowed us to also reduce the buffer impacts. We are providing green space still in this area behind what's proposed as our mailhouse, which is right here. So that provides the needed recreation space per the site plan regulations. And then the second major change that we made was adding this pedestrian accessway out to Portsmouth Ave. from the Haven Lane side, so that way pedestrians will be... It resulted in two wetland crossings, one here and one here, that will require a state wetland permit. But again, those are just crossings. We're not filling the wetlands, so they'll still have connectivity for drainage with culverts and all of that. So those changes kind of rippled throughout the whole plan set. Drainage changes were made, utility changes were made. The big change to the drainage was that at one point, we had kind of a central island that had a bioretention system in it to infiltrate the stormwater, and now what we're proposing is a section of porous pavement in order to infiltrate the stormwater. And we've also proposed some filtration drip edges on the backsides of the units in order to meet Exeter's stormwater requirements, which require treatment of residential roof runoff, which is actually not even a requirement of the state. So you guys have higher standards than the state, which is good. The other thing that we've done is we have our landscaping plan here. So we've proposed an eight-foot fence all along the property line adjacent to the abutters, and we're also proposing buffer plantings all along that property line as well. So that's been revised since the last set. And then we did also submit two waiver requests that Dave mentioned, one being for the radius for the driveway entrances and the second being for grading within five feet of a property line. So I'm just going to flip back to the site plan. So the reason for the radius waiver request is because this right-of-way is actually not wide enough in order for us to even create that radius out to Haven Lane. But that being said, Haven Lane is wider than what your standard road requirement is by quite a bit. So even though we don't have the 25-foot radius, we still have plenty of turning radii for trucks and anything like that that needs to enter the site, fire trucks, school buses. And we have all those turning templates included in the plan set to depict that as well. And then the second waiver request is for grading within five feet of the property line. So again, the site is just so tight with the buffer impacts that we're trying to reduce. So we have some grading within five feet of the property line, but that being said, everything will be restored after construction, and there will be construction fencing up during the course of construction in order to prevent any disturbance on the abutting property lines. So again, we did have a TRC meeting, like Dave mentioned, this morning. It was a productive meeting. We've got a bunch of technical comments, so I won't go through all of those from Underwood, but we felt they were all very addressable, so we'll be able to revise the plans and resubmit those prior to the next meeting and hopefully have another review by Underwood Engineers. I can speak to the traffic a little bit, and then if Kim has anything to add, I'll let him. But we basically, we submitted our traffic memo in the... I think the January submission? And then it was reviewed by VHB, and they issued a comment letter requesting more information. And so after that, Kim, our traffic engineer who's with us tonight, was able to have a conversation with the traffic engineer, and they both felt that the standards of the ITE manual have been met by the proposal because of the minimal amount of trips per hour that we're proposing. And the VHB memo also outlines some of the issues that presently exist, especially at the Alumni Drive and Green Hill Road intersections, one of them being that the two intersections, the lights aren't coordinated, so that causes traffic to back up from Alumni Drive all the way out to Green Hill Road. So they spoke, and they came to the conclusion that they don't feel it's necessary for us to go into a whole traffic study, which would be quite expensive, just to tell us the issues that we already know the answers to. So they both felt that it would be a better solution for the applicant to make some kind of a contribution toward the road improvement project that will be upcoming with DPW in order to figure out how to coordinate not just those lights, but also some of the other lights that all connect in that area. And I'll let Dave weigh in on this as much as he would like to as well, because he was involved in some of those conversations. But that's something that we wanted to discuss tonight, because if we do need to do the traffic study, we would like to get that done. But we also feel there's a better use of our resources that could go toward actually making a difference versus just doing the study that's going to tell us what we already know. And Kim, feel free to correct any of that if you...
I know the answer is correct, but you have to answer any question, right?
Okay. So that's a summary of where we're at. I can go through any more detailed plan changes if people have specific questions, but that's a general overview.
Any questions from the board at this point?
I don't have a lot, but I'll do a little bit.
Glenn, let's have a little board discussion first.
Okay.
Go ahead. So if you'd like to, go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. You did go through the changes in the site of the buildings, and could you go through that a little bit more slowly this time, just so I can figure out why things were moved? I understood one was to get rid of the... Get it away from the buffer, but the one that is by... I guess it's six. That was moved or deleted because that's the southwest, in the southwest, on Building Two. Unit six is no longer there. And there were five. There were one, two, three, four, five. There were five there before.
So Building Six?
Yeah. Unit six in Building Two.
Oh, I see.
It's numbered six. That's how I'm going. That's how I'm determining the...
Yeah. So what we did was we pulled Building Two closer to this roadway. So you can see, like, Building One, for example, has parking in front of it.
Yes.
So this buffer, we were trying to reduce impacts to.
Yes.
So we pulled this building toward the roadway more and eliminated that parking in front of that building and provided the parking instead across the street, and that was just to reduce buffer impacts. So that was the reason. And part of the reason why the building went from five units to four was because in pulling it forward, we lost the space to have the fifth one.
Okay.
So there's places throughout where, like, it may have been a four-unit building that became a five, and we kind of swapped things around as necessary when we made those changes.
Okay. So where is the parking for that building?
So there's two spaces in each garage.
In the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, right.
And then visitor parking is provided. There's two spaces here, two here, two or three right here, two there. So we have about... We have several spaces throughout the development for visitors.
But you lost a couple of trees.
Yeah. They did. They did a pretty good job planting.
Are those spaces replacing all of the spaces, the 2, 4, 6, 8 spaces in front of those unit, Building Two, I mean?
They won't replace all of them, but we also had excess parking than what's required because we had two... We have two per unit in each garage, and then we also had two outside per unit.
Somewhere.
Yeah. So... And now we basically have two per... Four total per unit for the ones that do have parking in front of the garages, and we have one extra space per unit for the spaces, the buildings that don't have spaces in front of their garage. So we're still providing one visitor space for each of those units.
Technically, you're only required to have one space per unit.
Yeah. So we have quite a bit of extra parking, considering that it's a townhouse-style development with garages.
Okay. On the sitewalk, Building Four was very close to the lip of the... Of that... I don't know what to call it. It's like a ditch, but it's an area that we were made aware of and that it floods frequently in heavy rains in the spring. Did that building... Did Building Four get moved? I know I can see the configuration is different. You had three units in that. You now have two. Looks like it's moved a little bit, but was that done out of concern for that flooding or the potential for flooding?
Yeah. So two things kind of happened. This building originally had another unit on the end of it.
Yep.
And this building had a third unit, and it was shifted back more. So with this... I think it was actually the rear corner of the unit that was right here that was closest to that culvert. So that did help slightly by kind of pulling those two units away and making this a duplex. But the other thing that we've done with this revision is we shifted... Or we provided this pedestrian access, and in doing that, we're proposing to connect the drainage that's coming into the site from the Thirsty Moose, as well as that large 48-inch culvert, into a drain manhole structure. And then there'll be a large culvert that comes out of it, and it'll run actually parallel with the stream versus coming into it perpendicular, which is causing a lot of erosion.
And you're confident that that building is...
Yeah. It looks close here, but if you look at the topography, it's quite a ways up the hill.
Okay.
And we can also buffer that slope if need be with riprap or whatever it may be. But like I said, the water will be coming parallel with the stream now, so that's going to help quite a bit.
Okay.
Glenn, would I add to that, too?
Sure.
One of the conditions that the Conservation Commission wants you to address is the culvert between the project and Thirsty Moose is upgraded as discussed. Now, I'm not sure what that means, but is that the culprit in question?
Yes. Yeah. So one of the things that was discussed quite a bit with the Conservation Commission was this kind of ponding area, which some of us saw on the sitewalk, and then that flows to a culvert, which is currently blocked, and it crosses the rear of the Thirsty Moose property and ends up sort of perpendicular. And it crosses the rear of the Thirsty Moose property and ends up sort of perpendicular with that large 48-inch culvert. This one's only a 15-inch, actually. So we're proposing now to replace that, and we have made contact with that property owner in order to come to some agreement to get that done.
So that upgrade is what was discussed?
Yes.
We might need clarity on that when we make it as a condition, but, yeah. Back to you, Glenn, sorry.
No, no.
While the marker was there.
Does someone else have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I'm fine with that. I had one question to the chair, just to verify for me. No, you, what you just asked was a question I had, though.
Glenn, just before you get off, Building Two.
Sure.
So they, people in Building Two are backing out of their garage into a roadway. Kind of blindly...
Correct, yes.
Same as in Building Six?
Building over here.
Oh.
Yep.
Except that there'll be more people coming in.
Yeah, Building Five, Building, Building Eight.
It's a little wider. And the trash barrels are out front, or we're not having a dumpster anymore, right?
Sorry, what was the question? I missed the question.
I said, and trash pickup is...
Oh, the trash, the trash will be stored in the garages and then they'll have, they'll hold it private.
Well, but whenever day of the week it gets picked up, it'll be out in front of that house.
Yes. Or we, you know, we can make some kind of arrangement for it to be even across in front of, like, Unit 29. There's some space there, it could be.
And when you're, when you're working, then, I don't want to get ahead of Glenn, of Building Four, does the retaining wall go in at that time?
Building Four...
Building Four has a retaining wall, well, behind it is a retaining wall for the building on Portsmouth Ave.
Yes.
So that will be built at this stage, not waiting till, like, five or 10 years.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so we've included with this set of phasing plan, and that shows what will be constructed during Phase One, which does include those walls, because it will include the pedestrian access, so it needs to include the walls in order to actually grade that area and do the wetland crossing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we circle back? This is probably a question that has been answered before, but what, what is the rationale behind not having a roadway that goes from the commercial building and residential building on Portsmouth Ave back to the apartments, the other townhouses?
Part of it is the concern about cut-through traffic, but the second concern is because of the phasing. So the current tenant has a lease on that front part of the property that's five years out, potentially 10 years out. So in order to kind of keep the two developments separate, we separated the driveways as well. And it's also a much less substantial wetland crossing versus being a full road and sidewalk and all of that through there.
What cut-through traffic were you concerned about?
At some of the conceptual meetings, the concern was raised that people would start to use that as kind of a second cut-through to get out to J.D. Hill and get to downtown versus like...
Avoid signals, two signals.
Yeah, but boy, that's a pretty curvy, that's a complicated route to take as a cut-through. That seems like it would be a non...
Well, people do it.
J.D. Hill is, too.
We've got several cut-throughs in Exeter, yeah.
I go through by Walgreens and the back way, but I can't imagine, can't imagine. I mean, Haven Lane is a very narrow, in my mind, a narrow road, and this is a residential development, so I don't know, that being what it is. On skipping around here, on the architectural drawings, I was a little confused because I thought that, I thought at some point the height of the buildings had been reduced to 35 feet. And then the only drawings that I have, it's all 40. All of them are 40 feet, there were no dimensions on Building Two, but all the others were 40, so...
Yeah, we noticed that today as well at the TRC. So before the next meeting, we're going to resubmit revised plans that have an accurate height, because we didn't even realize that until today.
So will that go to 35 feet?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it was just like an errant label on the plan.
The building you designed is 35 feet, though, which is wrong on here?
Yes, yeah.
Do you have any, let me see. Do you have any drawings like this that would show the townhouses? Or is this is for the Portsmouth Avenue, the front building? Do you have any for the...
We don't currently have any renderings on the townhouses.
We kind of need to see what those look like.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
Go, go. I'll take a break.
You're creating a new neighborhood. It's another pocket neighborhood, I don't care what you say, it's a pocket neighborhood. And I'm sad to say, if I was in this, not Building Three, that's going to look like a New Jersey motel. You've got to do something here. My suggestion is you take, you've got seven units there, take one of them out of the middle, give it a little more space, give them some green grass somewhere. And move, move some buildings in and out. On Building One, you have different...
Staggered, huh?
Staggered, yeah, staggered. The faces of the houses are staggered, are the units. Building Two is straight. You ought to be able to do something a few feet in or out, just to make it more like a neighborhood. I don't want to be the guy that's going home to one of those units some night and have had too many beers and I didn't go to the house that I put painted the red door on. Honestly, you've got to get some personality. This is a neighborhood you're creating. People are going to be living there. You've got to think about that. Who's going to be there and what are they looking for? It will be kind of its own neighborhood because of the way it's going in. It doesn't mean you can't, because you're going in and out of the other neighborhood all the time. So then the same thing on that long Building Three. Really, I think you're pushing the envelope too much. Take one of those units out just to give a little more elbow room. Just too many, too, you know, it's just too crowded, my personal opinion. But I think, I'm trying to think from a neighborhood point of view, as you drive down the street, are we looking at a motel here? Or are we looking at a nice neighborhood, different homes, the faces are different, a little different treatment on those? Oh, it's home. It's a neighborhood, it's my neighborhood. So if you put that in your mind, that's good. Now somewhere, I somehow have an idea that there's two building units that are connected with the Portsmouth Avenue piece. Am I right or wrong there? Because I thought Portsmouth Avenue is just the, the lower commercial floor with the apartments overhead.
Correct, yeah.
That's it, okay.
Yep.
I may have confused the other two that there.
Yeah, maybe the two that were originally kind of detached on Haven Lane.
Mm-hmm. Back to you.
That's a good comment. Kind of in line with what Wang was talking about. You know, you've got this in your notes about your, your buildings being in the 75-foot wetland parking and structure setback. You've got 13 units that are in, within the setback, a couple buildings almost entirely within it, and most of them are, half the building is in it. So it comes down to putting, in my opinion, putting, trying to put too much into this... You may say it's a big lot. I don't look at it as a big lot, and it looks like it's been filled up pretty, it's at capacity. I think pulling, eliminating, eliminating a couple of units might allow you to adjust the height of maybe Building One or Unit One and Unit 34 that are close to the houses that are on Haven Lane, maybe have a lower profile so they don't feel like they're being towered over. I went down again today just to look at the height of the buildings on Bonnie Lane, Bonnie Drive and Haven. There are no two-story buildings, unless I'm deceived by the appearance, but there are no two-story buildings on Bonnie Drive. And there are two on the, on the eastern side, which is the side that abuts this project. There are only two two-story buildings, so these are going to tower over them and they're close, and I...
Building Six, the same thing.
Yeah.
That's right in line with the existing neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, I don't like that there, I don't like that there is that much infringement on the wetland parking structure setback, 75-foot setback. And I am concerned. I feel that this is not in keeping with the neighborhood that it abuts and that there's, there can be things that you can do. I know this is a project of economy, you want to make as much as you can on these buildings, but I think we have to respect the neighborhood that it's being built next And staggering, Wang alluded to this, but, you know, staggering the buildings a little bit more, maybe making the ones that are closest to the Haven Lane properties, maybe, maybe only have those at one story, which is a little tricky since you have the parking situation, but you are only required to have one spot per unit, so that takes some of the pressure off to put in three, four parking spots per unit.
Yeah, I think, and the buffer impacts, we, of course, discussed at length with the Conservation Commission. We did submit the report from GOV Environmental, who did the consulting work, and a lot of what we discussed with the Conservation Commission was the functions and values of the wetland, especially as it relates to the easternmost wetland that, you know, is kind of more connected with Wheelwright Creek. So in our efforts to reduce buffer impacts, our focus was to, one, reduce the overall impacts within mostly the limited-use buffer, but also reduce overall impervious surface also within the 75-foot buffer as well, as much as we could. And we reduced that by almost 70 percent, I think it was around 60, 70 percent, that we reduced it from our initial layout. So the Conservation Commission felt that we had made significant adjustments in order to try to, you know, better meet the standards while also recognizing that these wetlands have very limited functions and values as they relate to, you know, wetlands overall.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate what you've done. I mean, you have done, you have made changes that I appreciate, and I think, I don't want to go without recognizing that those changes have been made. I just, you know, there's been a lot of talk about people who live in the area and water issues, foundations cracking, and I, I'm, I like to protect the buffers. They have a reason. They're there, they're there for a purpose. They serve a good purpose, and so I, I would just like to see those buffers respected. Someone else, while I read through my notes?
I can ask a question if you want, but...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I have a question on your pedestrian bridge and the lease that's involved in the building on Portsmouth Ave. Does the lease include the use of that parking lot? Because with the pedestrian, this is where I'm going with the question, can people park in that parking lot and walk over the pedestrian?
You mean after it's...
Okay, let me just finish my question. Right. Can they park there and walk, access the neighborhood that way? Because if they can, then we're going to be adding more traffic a little bit further down Portsmouth Ave. So that's the concern I have.
No, so after the, you know, Phase One is constructed, we've actually gone to great length to create kind of a plan for the tenant to show them what, you know, what they'll have access to for parking after the Phase One is constructed. So there won't be publicly available parking on that lot, like during the course of...
How would you prevent that?
I mean, the tenant is pretty open about not wanting people there, so I don't think, like, they've had issues with the Thirsty Moose, I think, in the past. So I don't think that anybody's going to get away with parking there. Yeah, they'll be out there telling them to move, or, yeah.
Okay. That, yeah, I'm a little concerned about that. I think that would be something that I still would like to see if we do a traffic study, that that would be a factor, just in case. I mean, I don't know how that could be prevented, other than threatening to tell people, and we can't control that.
Yeah.
You have to be at the mic and introduce yourself.
Can I be at this mic?
Yeah.
Yeah. Michael Green, Green &amp; Company. The lease with Robbins Federated Auto, they have use of the entire parking lot. They take it very seriously. Their big issue is Thirsty Moose using their parking lot. They act fast, keeping people from using the parking lot. I know you're concerned, so are they. They don't want anybody in their parking lot. Even when we were parking in it, they were wondering, who are we? Checking us out. Yeah, they were very concerned, and they're on top of it. So I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Thank you. Okay. Did I give you time to review your notes?
No, keep going.
Actually, mine's mostly traffic, and we haven't gotten there yet, so I don't want to...
I can fill in a blank, yeah?
Good.
Now, ask David, is there a 10 percent affordable housing...
Component?
Yes.
Part of this?
Yeah, it's on, it's somewhere, affordable, note number six on OV1, affordable units required, 10 percent of total gross units. Phase One, total units is four, and Phase Two is four, so meets the 10 percent.
So if, you know, Phase Two is five or 10 years out, if it doesn't, if it never gets built, is there any consequence?
No, it's, well, it's built in. We talked about that at the first technical review committee meeting, saying that you can't say, oh, you need eight units, I'm going to put them up front. It's like, you need to put portionally how many you're going to build, so they're building 34 there, they're going to put four out of the 34, so they'll meet the 10 percent.
I assumed you had talked about it, but I wasn't...
Yeah, they'll meet the 10 percent on each phase and in total.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
Traffic? Could we, there's a very complicated intersection there.
Yes.
Has your traffic study looked at that at all, or what are the plans? Do we need more signage there? What's, what are your thinking? And I don't have it, it's not on the plan, that's the big problem.
The intersection.
I don't think I know what roads are talking about.
Yeah, it's close to there. Well, I'll let Kim speak to this if he wants to, but the traffic that our site is generating, especially for the Portsmouth Ave development portion of it, that's where actually, it's actually a reduction in traffic during some of the peak hours from the current use. So there's, the traffic generation from this proposed development is so small that it wouldn't warrant any improvements from our development specifically.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? That made no sense to me, what you just said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so...
Can we try that again?
Less traffic.
Yeah, so the, so the traffic memo from Kim outlines the proposed and existing traffic flows in comparison, essentially. And if you compare the existing use on the front part of the site with the proposed, it's actually during some of the peak hours on, like, weekends, it's a reduction in some cases. And then in others, it's a slight increase, but not enough to warrant any type of, you know, additional signage or anything like that at the intersection. Does that make sense?
So you're talking about the Portsmouth, you're talking about the second phase?
Yes.
Are we, John, were you asking about Phase Two or Phase One?
It's Phase One, but it's all going out on Haven Lane.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the portion of that intersection.
That's where the confusion happened.
Obviously.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking Phase One.
Haven Lane feeds into Bonnie Drive, and that all feeds in over the...
Green Hill and Bonnie, in Haven Lane, that whole little area, that's a concern.
Just kind of slow down and take your chances right now.
Yeah. I'll let Kim speak to the traffic memo that he prepared.
Okay, that would be good. He's here tonight, let's see what he has to say.
Good evening, I'm Kim Hadron, Traffic Engineer with FLOC out of Salem. We conduct the trip generation for both phases of the project, and I'll talk about the Haven Lane phase. And let me get the numbers off my pad here so I can refer to them. We are generating...
Let's not be long.
Testing, testing.
There we go.
Sound good?
Good, thank you.
Now, we... Good. We generated trips for 34 dwelling units using standard... Sound good?
Good, thank you.
Now, we- Good. We generated trips for 34 dwelling units using standard methodology, methodology of the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to go over the peak hour trip generation. For the weekday AM peak hour, we generated 12 trips, three in and nine out. For the weekday PM peak hour, 16 trips, 10 in and 6 out. And for the Saturday peak hour, 19 trips, 9 in and 10 out. Now, there are 34 units there, it's not 34 trips during the peak hours, but what happens is the trips don't all happen during the same, same hour. For example, in the morning, some people might leave at 6 o'clock, some might leave at 7, some might leave at 8, some might leave at 9. But during the peak hour, the numbers are what we said. And that level of trip making will not make a notable or significant impact on the roads. And that's going by Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines and by experience. Any traffic problems in the area are going to stay like they are with no noticeable difference. Places in the road network that have free-flowing traffic will stay the same, or at least noticeably the same, with no significant difference. I'd be happy to give a different take on the answer, more complete information if you have follow-up questions.
So that's traffic from the condominiums?
Correct.
And existing traffic that's in Haven Lane, the school buses that go through, and so on and so forth.
No matter what the existing volumes are on Haven Lane, during non-busy times-
Yeah.
-during busy times, the amount of traffic the project generates is not going to make a noticeable difference in, in the traffic flow or safety.
Well, is it safe to say that all that traffic's going to be coming out Haven Lane and in on Haven Lane?
Run that by me again, please.
That all the traffic from the development, the homes, will be going in and out on Haven Lane?
Yes, they have the two driveways and, and those are the only ways in and out, and all the traffic will use Haven Lane.
Okay, so nine cars at once plus existing, is everybody's going, I know not all at the same time, but it's all using Haven Lane. So Haven Lane is going to see quite an increase from what happens today?
It's going to see the numbers that are in Table 1. And, for example, let's look at the busiest peak hour, the Saturday peak hour.
Okay.
19 trips. That would be one car on average for, per three minutes or so during the peak hour, and that would be split by direction. So it'd be, on, on average, one car per six minutes added one way on Haven Lane and one car per six minutes added the other way on Haven Lane.
Okay.
Mr. Chick, could I just follow up on that? So Haven Lane actually goes up and around, and then we have that other road, is it Bonny Drive?
Bonny.
Haven, right, Bonny. So your, your projection is that no one coming out of this new development would take a left onto Bonny?
No, I think they, they, many of them would. What'll happen is all of the traffic has to turn left out of the site onto Haven Lane.
Yep.
And the volume is what I said there, it's a low-volume situation in terms of what traffic's being added. And then some of the traffic could go down Bonny, some could continue down Haven.
Split.
It starts to split up.
It's going to split up, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that because what I heard was, it was going to stay on Haven Lane, and I-
Oh, no.
Don't see that that-
It starts on Haven and then splits up.
Okay, thank you.
What is, where is, is, there's a, there's a three-way, kind of a three-way intersection, is that Haven intersecting, and like, it's not on here.
No, it's-
It's further, it's closer to-
It's Bonny and-
Bonny and Haven.
Bonny.
Bonny and Haven, and then there's another meeting.
One goes straight ahead and one that goes to the right there.
Right.
That's a scary, kind of a scary intersection.
It's an intersection like this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you don't really realize that there's an, if you're not paying attention, you don't realize that there's another road coming in.
Of course, it thins out, as you pointed out, as people get further from home, but, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to-
Who has the stop sign now?
At which intersection?
At intersection with Bonny and, does someone have-
I think we've talked about two different-
If I'm coming out of that property and taking a left.
The stop sign's at the end of Bonny, as I recall.
That's it, there's no stop sign.
There's no stop sign.
Or there's the stop condition, really. It's, in other words, it's a T-intersection-
It shouldn't-
-and that's the traffic that yields a right-of-way, whether there's a stop sign, a yield sign, or whatever.
There used to be a stop sign there.
28 years ago.
Well-
It's not 28 years, there's been a stop sign and it's put down.
Somehow we need to look at that, how the intersection-
Yeah, I think so.
I do, I agree.
The other, Green Hill, Bonny, and-
You gotta have to go to a mic and introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I haven't opened to the public quite yet.
Yeah.
Two in a second. Yep. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Yeah, one more. Could I, could you just remind me why we have to have that other entrance road? The, the shorter one where you're requesting? Yeah, yeah.
So, we originally only had one entrance, and it was requested by the fire department to add a second entrance, to loop the road.
Did anyone discuss the, of using that as a gated road access in case there's an emergency? I think Sterling Hill, I believe, has one, yeah.
To have one of the two accesses be gated?
For emergencies. I mean, if the fire department is asking for that, it's for, to be able to get their equipment through if there's a fire, correct?
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering if that has to be used, other than for fire apparatus?
Um, I would say maybe school buses or delivery, it could be beneficial.
I don't-
Because otherwise-
School buses typically would go to the end of the, your road.
But what about like UPS or-
The widest drive is the one you added, though, right?
Sorry, love.
The widest drive is the one you added, the further back.
Well, they're actually the same width. It's, the reason that it's wider is because Haven Lane is actually wider than a typical road. So this little stretch where we're extending Haven is wider, but our road is narrower.
narrower than Haven Lane, but wider than the original entranceway.
The two are the same.
Really?
Yep.
I thought you said earlier that was smaller than-
No, the two, the two widths of the access drives are the same.
Then the fire department has told us that they could get in either one. I told you.
Um, we haven't, we haven't received any more feedback since we've resubmitted our plans, but one of the items on our agenda from TRC is to reach back out to them to confirm a few things, so we can certainly check on that.
All right, well-
I'm just not sure I see a benefit of closing one of them off, because it's-
I, I'm more concerned about the, the butters right there and the waiver that you need. That's a concern of mine when I do the site walk.
For the, for the-
For that second, yes.
Yeah, the butters on each side, yeah.
That, that was very close. And I have, I've got a concern. So I don't, I really want to be sold on a need for that.
We can look into that with the fire department.
Thank you.
I think we need to open the public session. I mean, we got landscaping to talk about some there, but, so before I do that, we received several letters in our packet, and I just want to have those put in the record that Jennifer and Zany Thomas from 28 Haven Lane have sent us a letter to read. The board has read these thoroughly. The next one is an email from Craig and Kathy Boudreau and Noel Guedet at 11 Bonny Road. Third one is from Richard Gross, oh, excuse me, Rachel Gross, pardon me, and that's 9 Haven Lane. Good suggestions that have been brought up. John, Joan Hayes from 37 Haven Lane had sent us a letter. And Daniel Heverhen from 32 Haven Lane has sent us a letter, and we thank you for that. We have a rather detailed letter from, and we've heard this information before. Michael Hawke and Daniel Frank is part of that, no, it isn't, excuse me, wrong. Ryan O'Brien, lives at 20 Haven Lane. And then we have one from Michael Hawke and Daniel Frank at 31 Haven Lane. And we have one here addressed from Kristina and William Tyndall at 12 Bonny Drive. We also have received one today, which is continuance and more pictures about this one, so we have read that. I will also add that entered to the record. I would ask that as our comments go along, try, please not to repeat if we've heard already. We've got cases, we have a lot of people, we're under the time limits of getting this done in a certain amount of time. And if that doesn't, isn't met, then the two parties have to agree to extend. So we're not dead in the water, but trying to do my best to get this handled as efficiently as possible. And so, anybody that would like to speak to this plan would please step to the microphone over here and introduce yourself, so we know who's speaking, and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Gwen, for bringing up Bonny Drive. We've been talking a lot about Haven Lane. Oops, I hit the wrong button. Oh, you know what, this will work fine. And I agree, you know, with all the concern, but I, let's, I don't want to forget about Bonny Drive, which, right here. Our house is right here, and the fence, I believe, ends here, with our house being here. I guess my question is, why doesn't the, the fence continue over? Would be my first question. Continue.
Do you want us to answer?
If you're fit.
Sure, if you'd like to, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the tree line actually will stay, like, the, the trees will remain in that section.
So these are all going to stay ch-
Correct.
Forest, okay.
Yep.
Um, so, which brings up, I didn't think of it before, but the board member thought of it, was parking. Are people going to park in, with no fence there? Park in front of our house and then cut through the, cut through the woods to there? Which, so, if there's no fence here, so you're going to park here and just kind of cut through here, you know, our property is going to become a, a cut-through, you know?
Well, that's private property and they have no business crossing your property. Ask them for the name, take the numbers on the plates, call the police.
Take the plate numbers.
Well, I mean-
That being said, this is our property too, which is all woods, and people cut through it all the time. So, concerns I had about, you know, when I went to, I, I was looking at new structures around the neighborhood over the last few years. There's the apartment complex next to Las Olas, they put a nice fence behind it, blocking the neighborhood. The car wash, the, the new car wash, they put a 8-to-10-foot fence-
Yep.
-with trees in front of it.
Yes.
The Sharon Drive, is it Sharon or?
Sharon Circle.
Sharon Circle, thank you. That has a nice 8-10-foot fence all around, not only around the property, but, you know, going into the property with nice pine trees too. You can, you know, I mean, it, it, it's a nice barrier there. I, I guess I'm asking for the same thing. And maybe if the fence, if the, you know, if the fence doesn't work going that way, maybe it cuts across that way.
Mm-hmm.
But those are my requests, is don't-
Thank you.
You know, don't forget about Bonny Drive.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm Ma.
Okay, Ma.
I'm-
Please use the microphone.
Sorry. I brought a picture to, to kind of like emphasize what he's saying. This is what we have, this is taken from our packet. This is the buffer we have right now. And how much of this have they taken out?
Can you speak to the mic?
So, requesting a fence is not asking a lot for you to do. It really isn't, because you're taking all of this away from us, and that's creating so much more noise for us. And, and plus, our view is going to be completely different now, because we're going to be looking at buildings taller than our homes. When I look out my window, I usually look at a sunrise. I really don't want to see your buildings, I'm sorry. I want to be a good neighbor, but you also have to participate in being a neighbor too.
Thank you. Anyone else with a quick comment or two?
IT guy, help me. Sorry.
If you're showing your letter and the pictures you've already sent to us, written, we've already seen that and we're well aware of that. The way the water flows?
Yes.
Yeah, we've seen that already, you've shown it to us already, thank you very much.
Okay, there was also some-
We're very much aware of that, thank you.
There was also some more images that I wanted to show about channeling, but-
All right, quickly, please.
We'll cross that bridge another day. So, I have a letter here, if my neighbor wants me to read it or not. Okay. I'm reading this letter on behalf of my neighbor. My name is Inga Newcombe of 14 Haven Lane. I have lived in Exeter for 24 years. I have previously rented an apartment on extremely busy High Street, owned a condo on a very busy Epping Road, and owned a house on busy Route 111 Brentwood Road. When my son Mason was three, I decided I didn't want to live on loud, busy roads anymore. I found us a quiet, a home in a quiet, safe neighborhood of JD Hill, where we have lived for the past 16 years. Haven Lane is just that, a haven, a peaceful, quiet place to raise a family, a place with grassy yards, wildlife, and many trees. A place where kids, big and small, ride bikes and play basketball, while people walk their dogs and chat with neighbors in the road, without fear of getting hit by a car. Most letters from residents in JD Hill have been about the project itself, animals, increased traffic, et cetera. But no one has talked about the emotional impact. I feel angry at the thought of cars racing up and down my road, heartbroken at the thought of hundreds of trees being cut down. Sick thinking greed is seemingly more important than doing the right thing. Many residents here choose this neighborhood because it is quiet and safe. Don't take that choice away from us. I ask you to consider keeping this space green, a green buffer between us and a future single building along Portsmouth Ave, with residential units above businesses. That is the intention of the Mund, isn't it? Don't put a road to it on our quiet, safe side. If you do have to build a housing complex, keep the only access to any development from the Portsmouth Ave side only. Keep the building structures in scale with our small houses in the buildings on Portsmouth Ave. I understand the need for housing, but, but what about the need for green space? Nature, wildlife, the emotional well-being and happiness of the current JD Hill- the emotional well-being and happiness of the current JD Hill residents? Inga Newcombe.
Thank you.
So I, just a couple of thoughts during the meeting that I had that I wanted to talk about. I totally mirror a couple of things that the board said. And one of those, one of those things that came up was density. While the lot is large by density standards, the buildable area is really quite small, and we have completely filled the buildable area. So I understand that the ordinance allows that, but it's dense, in my opinion, in the buildable area. So I just wanted to comment on that. So you've read my letters. It's not the first I've been here. So, you know, at this point, I think our opposition to this neighborhood is quite clear. So I just want, and the Conservation Commission has talked a lot about the environmental side of things, so I'm going to skip most of that and just talk about stuff that is specific to the planning board. One of the things that concerns me about this neighborhood is that even though there is a lower area below it that the, that the water will flow into, this, this development is more or less in a depression. And all of the water from the whole area flows through this depression, through the building site, around the building site, et cetera, et cetera, to get to that lower area. And from my point of view, building in a depression creates long-term problems. While we're going to do a lot of things, and I applaud Green and Company and Joneson Beach for their work on the drainage around this, but in my mind, it's not a question of will there be a future liability, it's when will that liability strike and who is responsible for it? You know, because water is invasive and does a lot of damage. And when some of these systems fail, water's going to do damage. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And so from a liability standpoint, it concerns me greatly that we're even considering building in this area for this reason, because somebody is going to be liable for that damage when it happens. Somebody's going to be liable when the sewage treatment pump fails and all that sewer backs up, back down the hill into the neighborhood that they're just built. So that's one of my concerns. MUND. So one of the things I am a little confused about is what, what are, are we approving MUND? Do we have to? Is there a conditional use that has to be approved for MUND specifically, or are we just talking about the wetland? I mean, that's a question to the board.
Dave, you got an answer for that?
I don't understand the question.
So MUND is a, is a use, but I thought it was a conditional use that requires approval, or it doesn't require approval? I'm confused about that.
It requires planning board approval.
Okay. So is this meeting, part of this meeting to approve the MUND aspect in addition to the wetlands conditional use?
There's, there's two approvals being requested. One is for the site plan
Okay.
of the MUND, or of a conventional, doesn't matter. It's a site plan
Okay.
approval. And then there's a conditional use permit approval for the wetlands.
Okay.
So in my memo, you'll see that there are two planning board motions, conditional use permit wetlands motion and a multifamily second motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so multifamily would be the MUND.
Correct.
Okay. So it troubles me that we're utilizing MUND to create a disconnected neighborhood from Portsmouth Avenue, which in my mind is what the MUND was intended to do, is to increase density along Portsmouth Avenue to help with utility expenses and things along those nature. But instead of doing that here, we're delaying that for some period that may or may not happen down the road. I suspect they're very serious people, and they are, they will do this, but that's, that's a distance from now. It's not today. So we're utilizing benefits of the MUND to create a disconnected neighborhood that doesn't, in its own right, really fulfill MUND, even though I understand that there is a commercial, existing commercial, and that this is residential, and that together that does create MUND, but they're, they're not connected, and they're not going to be connected. And I prefer that they don't be connected, honestly, but to utilize MUND to achieve that, I'm not in favor of. There's some things that I pointed out in my letters about the MUND, which I think the board really needs to understand, and I want to come back and talk to you more about. When you increase the height of a building, it has a shadow distance. It's not in all circumstances, it depends on the orientation of the buildings, but in this particular case, you've got two residential houses that are directly north of two large 35-foot structures. The MUND allows them to have up to a 50-foot structure. But as buildings get bigger, the shadow length gets longer. But the MUND has allowed the buildings to get bigger and closer. And in the ordinance, Section 1.2, the purpose of the ordinance is to protect light and air. That's one of the statements in the beginning of the ordinance. You are taking away that right by allowing that large of a structure that close to another structure. And in my mind, that is in direct conflict with the MUND. And I would like to see something done to change that. I understand that it's the ordinance today, and I think Green and Company's been reasonable in terms of the height of their buildings, even though I don't, I won't want to see 35-foot buildings there. But when you look at how close they are to the single-family homes, you, at least one of them, they have moved, I don't know what the building numbers here are, but, oops. So.
Which one are you going for?
Here. This one right here. They've moved this building down, and they've made this building narrower in order to provide more space, which is greatly appreciated. And because of that movement, it is mostly not casting a shadow on this building currently. However, this building here is still 20 foot from the line and will cast a significant shadow on this building for at least part of the year. Now, I have to talk to Green and Company a little bit about this. Shadow casting is very complicated to calculate, very complicated to simulate, and, but there's no doubt in my mind, it will cast a shadow for a significant period of the year on this house, this structure here. And that's not okay. So those are a couple of things. Let's see, what else am I missing? So one of, one of my concerns, and I, and I looked again at the plan today, and I think given the density of the development, it's probably quite impossible, but it would be really helpful if some of, at least a handful of the mature trees in this area were to remain, because it's, it takes decades to grow trees bigger than 35 feet. And since these structures will be 35 feet high, some mature existing trees will help break up that line of buildings. And I think it would be really helpful if it was possible to achieve that somehow in terms of giving the eventual neighborhood to make it feel more like it is part of a neighborhood instead of just clearcutting and, and building. Because what you're going to have as a result of this is a sea of buildings from Haven Lane. That's all you're going to see, is a sea of buildings. And then possibly, if you're high enough up the hill, you're going to see all the way to Portsmouth Ave, whereas right now it's all trees. So I guess that is everything that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Dam. I'm at 5 Bonny Drive. One of the things I really appreciated tonight was a concern of mine is definitely the traffic. I don't understand traffic studies, but it kind of sounds like they're making it sound very low traffic-wise. I'm sure it's not going to just be one person per unit. And then you've got, does, when they do traffic studies, does it play into having Amazon packages, people doing lawn maintenance, the mailman, I mean, all these different things that come in? Is that part of the traffic study? And how do they know how many people per unit? I just, I just feel like a lot more traffic's coming into the neighborhood than what they're making it sound like. That was just my point, and I appreciate you bringing that up too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hauck, and this is my wife Danielle Frank. We live at 31 Haven Lane, and abut this project on two sides of our property. Before we get into anything else, we would like to express our gratitude to Jenna and Michael Green, as well as John O'Neill, for taking the time to meet with us to discuss some of our issues related to the project. So we appreciate that. That being said, we still have many concerns which remain unaddressed after seven months of site plan revisions, this month's conservation meeting, and our meeting with the developers. We want to stress to the planning board our urgency as abutters in having these issues addressed and incorporated into site plans before any approval is granted. Now I'll have Danielle dig into more of our specific concerns.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, our concerns about the proposed.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Yeah, adjusted toy. That's good, thank you.
First, our concerns about the proposed buffers. We are not requesting buffers to separate new neighbors from JD Hill. We do believe that JD Hill should be screened sufficiently to reduce the noise and light pollution from Route 101 and Portsmouth Avenue as much as the existing forest does now. We also believe the buffer needs to account for the differences in height between our existing homes and the new townhouses. We request the developer provide robust plantings and fencing, including but not limited to low-growing plants, adequate fencing that matches the aesthetics of the existing neighborhood, shrubbery and evergreens that will grow tall and dense, tightly foliage trees with a minimum caliber of four inches that will grow to a minimum of the height of the townhouses at maturity, verbiage in the condo docks that guarantees maintenance, upkeep, and care of all plantings and fencing on an ongoing basis. Next, we at abutters need written assurances from Green and Company as well as the Town of Exeter that the well-documented water issues in JD Hill will not be made worse by this project. We request an established means of remedy for any water issues experienced by residents due to this new development. Whatever the remedy, it must require that the parties responsible for the development are liable for financial burden required to repair JD Hill homes and properties and restore them to the previous condition and watersheding capacity. Tonight, we handed in two petitions to the board that are regarding construction. The first petition is signed by all nine abutting households. The second petition is signed by nearly 70 residents throughout JD Hill. All are concerned about construction noise. This is an established, quiet neighborhood of working-class people who report to their jobs around the clock, first, second, and third shifts. Residents just 100 feet from the site range in age from less than a year old to over 90. Per the builder, this will be about two years of construction, and per town ordinance, the ongoing noise could be seven days a week, 15 hours a day, which is an untenable burden for two years. If and when this project is approved by the town, those petitions request that site work, one, only be allowed 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., two, only be permissible Monday through Friday, three, never be allowed on federal or local holidays. And we ask the board to review the petitions and set this up on our behalf. Finally, height. While Green and Joneson Beach have kept the building's height within the requirements of the zone, as we've said, we have significant concerns about the oppressive height of the buildings closest to the abutting JD Hill properties. The townhomes tower over the neighborhood, dwarfing homes that have already been here for 60 years. This has a negative impact on our quality of life and our property values. The JD Hill homes most significantly impacted are those that lie north of the new townhomes, and that's 31, 35, and 37 Haven Lane. Thus, we request that buildings, I think it's, I think it's one and nine, one, be limited to a height of a maximum of 30 feet, which is still more than one full story over the tallest homes that abut, or, two, preferably, that the two townhouse units closest to the abutters be removed from the project entirely or moved elsewhere on site where they are not looming over abuttered properties. This specific request to adjust height near abutters is made per Exeter zoning ordinances 1.2 and 10.1. D, which require the Exeter development, and I quote, promote health and the general welfare of residents, provide adequate light and air, end quote, and that the town, quote, control its growth, size, and nature to achieve the following objectives: to protect the health, safety, convenience, property, and general welfare of its inhabitants, end quote. Loss of sunlight during a New Hampshire winter, risk of water damage to property, and looming 35-foot structures next to homes only 13 to 20 feet tall is not within the bounds of the zoning.
So in closing, again, we want to say we are very appreciative of the developers' efforts to work with us on plans that better suit the neighborhood. We request, though, the planning board and Green and Company keep in mind how long the JD Hill community has enjoyed the surrounding neighborhood and environment in its current state. Also, understand how disruptive this development is to all of our lives: construction for an estimated two years, a doubling of traffic on two streets, loss of an active forest, et cetera. Please do not greenlight this project as-is, which would result in a reduction in our quality of life and our property values. Please require the changes we have outlined above. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Dave, doesn't the town already have set times that construction can begin and end in this town?
Yes, I think the conduct regulations, Chapter 7, it's set by the select board.
Yeah. Which is 7:00 to 5:00?
No, it's, uh.
Seven to four?
Hold on, hold on.
Weekdays. Go ahead.
It is, uh, Chapter 7 Conduct Regulations, which are amended, adopted by the select board, the Exeter Select Board. The planning board does not have, does not have authority over this Chapter 7, which, I'll read it. It's just 701.5 Construction or Repairing of Buildings. The erection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building other than between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., except in case of urgent necessity in the interest of public and safety, then only with a permit from the building inspector, et cetera, et cetera. They can ask for a waiver from that, but right now the select board, the town's select board has adopted the policy townwide that construction can occur between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. I definitely would have to find out and question if the planning board would have authority to override, because the select board is the, you know, governing body of the, of the Town of Exeter. And if they deem those are the construction hours, it might, it's concerning if you treat different properties differently, because a property right next door to this could go and construct during those hours, but. right next door to this could go and construct during those hours, but this one can't, so I, I'd have to find out if that, if that's, if the board, you know, has that as a question.
Thank you.
Good evening. Louis Franceschi from 36 Haven Lane, right over the corner. My petition for the development company is, right now, Haven Lane is pulling, if you, when you saw it in the review, is in an angle and going all the way down to my property. So every time I have a heavy rain, I got a humongous amount of water, because the latest drainage is over 32. So I got a humongous amount of water going directly to my house and being, spending a lot of money to make a trench capable to disbar the water, and with the extension of this road, that water will be going straight to my house again. So I asking the development company to be sure putting drainage in this, because right now, the pitch is directly to my house, and if they don't do that, I will be receiving a lot of damage of water coming down. And I last, big storm we have last week, last year, I calculate about, about 1.5 gallons per minute can go down that hill. So that tells you how much water can collect that road and send it directly to my house.
Where are you?
36 Haven Lane, right in front of the entrance.
Can we use a pointer, because I'm not?
That one?
Right over there.
You're off the, you're not on this map, you're off it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the road right now is pitched this way, so it's pitching to my house. So right now, between the grass, existing grass, and the channel I create, the water is basically going to the ravine. But if they extend in the road, the water will be no longer going to the ravine, will be going to my house. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I think I need to ask for a motion to table. One more? Go ahead.
Hi. Sure. My name is Christina Tindell. I live at 12 Bonnie Drive. The development is right within eye shot of our house. I live with my husband and my two small children, who are one and three years old. We walk the neighborhood twice daily with our dog, and I know we did, I, I spoke to Dave, and he said that I should bring up traffic concerns with the Select Board, which I plan to do, but it did seem like there was some discussion about traffic at this meeting, and so I did want to say, although it might seem from a traffic study that there's not a big increase, it's absolutely going to double the traffic, just based on resident count. And currently, we spoke about the T intersection at Bonnie and Haven. That intersection does not have a stop sign, and then if you were to take Bonnie the opposite way to, like, exit towards Portsmouth Ave, I think we began to talk about that intersection, but then there was some confusion. The intersection, if you take Bonnie and you get to the end of Bonnie going towards Portsmouth, you have a stop there, but to your right and left, there's no stop, and there's a turn. I believe it starts as Green Hill, and it might turn into Bittersweet as it kind of wraps that, that curve. There's a house that's under construction currently, there's someone who parks on the road, it's a blind turn, and I've nearly been run off the road with my double stroller and dogs right there multiple times in the short time that I've lived in the neighborhood. I think that there needs to be a four-way stop there, and there was some talk about making some changes on Portsmouth Ave in terms of syncing the lights. If there's a, if there's responsibility to change things on Portsmouth Ave, I think that putting in stop signs at both, both ends of Bonnie, at both of those intersections we were talking about, I think that would be in order, and maybe even, nobody respects the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit in the surrounding neighborhood as it is. I think it would be in everybody's interest and for the safety of residents and children, if we're going to double the traffic and up the population density in this neighborhood, putting in speed bumps would be my preference. And I will, I plan to take it to the, the Select Board, but I do think that that would be in the interest of keeping residents, all residents, even new residents, safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. No, before, before we do that, we're, we're at day 70 today out of the 65 days. They, they, they came here tonight and exceeded the 65, but they provided a written request to be continued until this meeting. So before you adjourn, you would, I would, I would request that the applicant agree to any extension and determine what day they will be ready to return.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I ask you or you?
We definitely agree to an extension. What day do we want to return?
And we have, I don't know if you want to come back, well, is it the 13th? Is it the 27th? Come back to the 13th? I, I don't know if you'll be ready with the comments, but you could always just come back to the 13th.
Well, when would we have to resummit plans for that meeting? Do you understand what comments?
You wouldn't have to if you wanted to just keep the discussion going.
Yeah, I think that-
And then come, you know, if you wanted to keep the discussion going and then come back on the 27th, if, if you could get the plans, I don't know, it's up to you.
Yeah.
But, but if you ask to be tabled to the March 13th at 7:00 p.m., then you have flexibility to move it if you need to.
Yeah, I would say, let's do the 13th.
Yeah.
If that's possible, so we can continue the discussion with the board.
So March 13th at 7:00 p.m., right here in the Noec Room.
Okay, but before I make, I, I just do have one question about this.
Yep.
Whether or not we're going to request a traffic study, are you guys okay with us having that conversation on the 13th?
Yeah, I think that's probably part of the-
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, because you earlier said you wanted, you'd prefer to know that tonight, but, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so I'm going to move that we table, hold on.
Yeah, I, I, they probably wouldn't mind. I wouldn't think if, if it's going to take any time, but, I mean, the two weeks is, you know, plenty, you know, is time if you want to discuss it. I would give it a few minutes if people feel strongly one way or the other.
I, I would vote to have a traffic study done, personally, at this point.
They had a traffic study, is that what you're talking about?
They, they had a traffic memo.
Memo.
They didn't do a full impact analysis.
Analysis, and I am concerned. I'm concerned about the neigh, that neighborhood already, and I am concerned. Can I get clarification? We haven't closed public comment, have we?
Nope.
The lease, is that lease to the front part on the Portsmouth Ave, is that transferable? Right now, the auto place has that lease. Could they sublease it to someone else?
I believe any type of sublease has to be approved.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm- Okay, thank you. I, I'm just concerned that I'm not feeling comfortable with the fact that that parking lot cannot be used as an extension of traffic. I'm just not, and so I would prefer.
I don't, no, a traffic impact analysis is not going to study that.
They, as part of the whole unit-
About illegal parking, they're going to say it's not allowed.
Illegal parking, I mean, if parking, under some circumstances, happens there.
Oh, okay.
It's one, right, it's one unit, it's one piece of property, even though there's a culvert that splits it, it's still one property. I, I just think it's appropriate, unless I can hear of some way to be assured that there's no possibility, and I don't think that's possible, to say that no parking would be there.
Oh, no possibility.
Yeah, I hadn't finished my sentence, Don, that no parking would be allowed in that huge, underused parking lot right now on the side of Portsmouth Ave. If you go by, that parking lot is underutilized, so.
So just let me-
Am I making myself-
No, let me, yeah, I, I just, I'm not sure how the traffic impact analysis is going to address your concern.
Because there's going to be traffic added to Portsmouth Ave. If the parking availability in that underutilized parking lot happens, it's going to affect Portsmouth Ave, and I'd like to know what a study would tell me. And I also, a memo is fine, but I still think that there's going to be more impact in that J.D. Hill area.
But the project that's going to be built there is going to take all of that property.
But I'm, I'm talking about, it's one big property, right?
Yes, it is.
And it's phase.
It's going to have one big building with parking around it.
In phase two.
In phase two.
Right. Okay, I'm going to try this one more time. You do, but everyone needs to understand what I'm saying. I have two reasons that I would prefer to see a parking, a, a traffic analysis, an actual analysis instead of a memo. One is phase one.
Including, including this whole project, Portsmouth Ave?
Including the whole project.
And J.D. Hill.
Because we're being asked to approve phase two.
Okay.
Right? As part of this, even though it's 10 years down the line, I still would like to see the overall impact on both phases. I think it's important to know that. We're being assured that no one is going to be able to park in phase-two parking lot and utilize a pedestrian bridge. But I'm not comfortable with any assurance that that is not going to happen or could not happen.
I'm not comfortable approving something that's not going to be built for five years down the road.
Ten.
Ten.
Or ten.
I, that's, that's a hell of a lot of things.
That's out of our realm, I believe, yeah.
Right.
So I think we've got to draw a line and, and suggest to the developer that we're looking at the J.D. Hill piece.
I don't-
And not the other piece, because I don't, I will not approve that in five or 10 years down the line.
I'm not comfortable with the way this is going, but is that possible, Mr. Sharples?
Yeah.
That we don't even look at phase two or approve it? I, I, I mean, I don't know how that's even possible. This is such an awkward-
I could figure it out. I, I can't answer that right now, but I could-
Well, I saw-
So you're saying you approve phase one?
Well-
Didn't say that.
Or, or, no.
In the event-
Well, that's what you, someone said that, like, approve-
Phase one is approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do not feel comfortable approving a phase that's 10 years down the road.
Okay.
Or four, or five, or 10, depending on the current leasee, and whether they extend their lease, they're allowed to do that, my understanding, right? But Mund is along Portsmouth Ave. It's one piece of property. There's a lot of oddities to this project. So if we're, we're, on one hand, we're asking, can we approve phase one but not two, but I don't know how that can happen with the Mund, and that it's supposed to be on Portsmouth Ave. And the only reason why this development is happening is because it's, it, the property is on Portsmouth Ave.
Phase is Portsmouth, yeah.
Right. I, I mean, this is just odd to me.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, but we have to figure it out, don't get too-
That's the first time for everything, I always say.
Right, it's just, it's literally, I, I have so many questions, but one is, and we can wait until the next meeting to give people a chance to think about it, but, and maybe I can find a better way to explain my concerns, but I do have concerns.
I, I hear what you're saying, yeah, yeah.
So can I ask, you've opened the, you've opened the can of worms.
I've opened the door. Can't hold worms, yeah.
So I, I'm feeling the same as, as she is about this, and if I can't, I won't be at the meeting on the 13th sadly, and I, I am really concerned, what if this never happens? Then we've got, we've got a mixed, then we've got a Mund project with no commercial. Can we, 10 years from now?
There's an existing commercial.
Okay, well, what if some, I mean, there are a lot of what-ifs, but this has to have, has to have both, so what if, I mean, what if they, what if something happens with the economy in five years and that business is-
What if? Well, it's going to happen to the economy, not what if.
Yeah, I, because I, I kind of, I had that same concern until I reread about the Mund, and it does have the mixed use, because, right, it does, and it currently has it, so I couldn't go down that road. I couldn't, but-
Right, well-
But it might.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
We'll see.
You don't see what I'm saying.
No, I understand it. I, I understand it. I just, I, I, you know, you got to just, which I will, look at the regs, I mean, it, it's tough to say, well, you know, if it doesn't, you know, that, like, and make a decision on that, one way or the other.
Hypothetical.
Hypotheticals. You, you can't really live there, you have to live in the regulations.
I understand.
So, you know, because, because there is commercial there now, and you can say, well, it, it might close in five years. Well, it might, but, you know, you, you, like, how does that, how does that affect your decision-making process? You don't know.
It's still a commercial property.
So it probably doesn't come into play, you know.
Right, it's still commercial property.
Exactly.
Whether there's an active business in there or not, it's still-
Correct. I mean, a lot of projects get approved and they don't get built, like, so, I, I mean, that happens, you know, so I, I don't know, to answer your question.
Can I?
Can you grab the mic?
Yes.
No. Michael Green, Green and Company, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. It hasn't come up, but I think it needs to, and hopefully it's, I don't open a can of worms. But the issue with traffic, the volume of traffic, according to the traffic calculations, even if you ask VHB, it's a low volume of traffic that's being added. That's not the issue. The issue, I think, are more of these intersections that need stop signs and the timing of the light at Portsmouth Avenue. This is a discussion we had today with TAC or-
TRC.
TRC, and-
That this board has not seen yet, so.
Right, but that, but everyone here has seen what happens with queuing at that light, because you've got an issue with Dunkin' Donuts, you've got an issue with the light at Alumni Drive, I mean, all of these things are tying together all the way into downtown Exeter by the, by the bandstand. These aren't a, a problem that's being caused by this development, these are issues that exist today.
Correct. Right, and I'm not concerned personally about the queuing. I, I'm focused on the project and the neighborhood itself, and I have concerns that there's-
Understood. I'm just bringing up what came up as part of the TRC, which you will all, which you all will have a chance to review.
Thanks.
The others, bear in mind, and I, I said this to Conservation, sorry to be repetitive, but, but it wasn't the Planning Board. We originally had two 50-foot-tall buildings proposed on this building that were 80 units. We're at 34 units now.
Yep.
We also have to balance the fact that we are doing 10% affordable, so as we keep saying, take away, take away, take away, there's a limit, and we're at that limit. So I, I just want you to understand where we are. I mean, we can go back to the big buildings, we don't want to, we think it would be the wrong move for the neighbors, and, and this is not a threat in any way.
Well, yes, it is.
It's, it's not, it's just, we haven't said it, we said it to Conservation, I just have to say it. Okay, and, and as we talk about what, what have we done, we haven't done nothing. We've dropped this from 80 to 34 units. It's a significant drop. And the 80 units had no impacts that were undoable as far as wetlands, et cetera. So this has a significant less traffic, significant less impact, significant less people.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll just add that, number one, I have, we haven't seen anything from what you, your meeting this morning, and I appreciate what you just said, however, that doesn't change what I feel is my responsibility for what I have in front of me at this moment. Thank you.
May I, just, you want me to just elaborate on the TRC discussion about traffic?
Sure.
That we had this morning, I'll be brief. The, the traffic engineer called me a couple of weeks ago, you know, and he, you know, after like the second sentence, I was like, stop, you know, talk, you need to talk to someone who understands traffic engineering. So I said, talk to Jason Plord, who's VHB, who's our third-party consultant that we hire and pay for advice. So he's, you know, we're his client, not the developers. So I said, talk to Jason if he's okay with that at VHB. Mr., I, how do you say your last name?
Kim.
Kim. Kim said, you know, I said, Kim, call him, you know, so, so they got together. Then Jason called me on the phone shortly thereafter and, and, and kind of agreed that, you know, a full traffic impact analysis- you know, a full traffic impact analysis based on the numbers is not going to, you know, is likely not going to be really any improvements that are warranted beyond what is the existing problems that already exist, that everyone has already pointed out.
Yeah.
Those problems already exist. So if problems already exist and you're adding to it in, in New Hampshire, you can only do what is called an exaction. You could impose an exaction on the developer, but it's, it's limited to a proportional share. So the proportional share that they're contributing to the problem. So if you look at these numbers, three, four during peak hour, and you have, and the, and the traffic on Portsmouth Ave is, you know, 1,000, 3,000, that proportional share is, is almost nothing. So the exaction would, would be minimal. So it, we're, we're spending 20, $20,000, $25,000 on an analysis. They are, they, the, Jason called me and said, that money could be better spent, invested into making improvements and solving those issues that exist today. That's what he told me.
That's something touched on that.
Yeah, and we, I just wanted, yeah, I was going to explain it, but it kind of got, you know, yeah. But that's what is explained. I brought it up to the tier. We brought it up to the technical review committee, the town engineer, Underwood was there. You know, everyone thought that that was a, a good idea worth exploring and bringing to the planning board in lieu of a traffic impact analysis that's probably going to say what we already know it's going to say. So that, those funds and resources would be better invested towards solving the problem that exists out there, solving the issues that exist.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, I just follow, follow up one question with Mr. Sharples. I know.
Quickly, please.
We're running way over what you wanted to do. The TRC did not have a concern with the number of vehicles being added to this neighborhood. With that many units, what was it, three, nine? I just, that seems so low to me with that many units. You were in the meeting.
You, you, you go by the, you go by IT standards. You know, you go by standards, they generate a use, they are on average. Sometimes houses will go more, sometimes houses will have less, depending on how many occupants or so forth. So all these studies, whether it's this study or a lot of studies that, you know, you have to base it on average.
Okay.
Averages. So they, I think they average 10 trip ends per residential unit, Kim?
Maybe over the course of a day.
Yeah, 10, 10 trip ends per residential unit, meaning, you know, leave, come back, leave, come back, five times. That, that's, that's average.
Over the course of a day.
Somebody might not leave at all, somebody might leave 20 times. So it all comes up.
All right, well.
And, and, and I could, yeah, I'll stop there.
Okay. So I'm, I'm willing to wait until March to, I want to think about it, and I'd like to see the memo from the TRC and the questions and answers.
We'll have that by that time.
We will.
Yep.
Well, that was just more of a.
You just gave us.
That was a discussion point. I'll try to articulate something. I mean, I, all I did was bring it up at the TRC. I didn't, we don't have like a.
Okay.
You know, lengthy comment about it.
All right.
Oh, done.
But if you, if you, you're going to wait till the 13th to decide?
Yeah, we're waiting.
Okay. And I could try to have, I'll see if Jason's available, so maybe from VHB, so he could, you know, maybe pop on Zoom, and, and if you have any questions for him, he could be available, so I'll ask.
And more elaboration on the other improvements that we could have in that neighborhood would be a better understanding of the improvements.
What?
In lieu of the traffic study, what the proposed improvements might be.
Yeah, it'd probably be just, we, we thought about, this is a holistic project along Portsmouth Ave, so it'd probably be just a contribution toward that. I mean, there has been some mention about stop signs and, and speed bumps, but that's all within the purview of the select board. I mean, the planning board could maybe make a recommendation, but you can't say, put a stop sign here.
Yeah, that's something we have to see.
That's, that's the governing body.
And, and where the select board begins and where the two shall.
Yeah, anything to do with stop signs, you know, police offenses, speed bumps are all select.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So are you ready for me to?
Oh, have you got a menu? A menu? I'm motion.
Sorry, it's my fault.
I'm so excited, I can't, yes, please.
Okay, so I'm going to move to table, planning board case number 24-8 to March 13th, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
At the NOAC room.
Pardon me?
At the NOAC room.
At the NOAC room. This is room.
Seconded? I think a voice vote, is that adequate for this? So those in favor, please, by saying, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? See, they're voting someone this far anyway. Abstentions, the ayes have it, so we'll see you in March. Thank you so much for your time. We've got to get us, get you a little better intersection. All right. Isn't he upset by the? The condos? Worried about what he did at the front of that later? What is, what's he advantaged? Yeah, he's supposed to, yeah. To do it, he had to see the, what's that? I only have one tissue there, but that's all right. We're going to put Dave on that one. Okay, that's that, that, and that, and that, and that. What else we got? Another case here somewhere. Here we do.
And there's some stuff.
Oh, here we go again. Oh, the crowd diminishes. It dried out, huh?
I don't know about changing times for construction. Not a job with that, that is so important.
How are you on the?
I don't know.
How are you still there? You're still downstairs.
I mean, I'm outside.
But you're still there and you're up here.
Thank you.
In the back room.
Yeah. Okay. Got my gin here somewhere. Here we go. Hold that shit.
Okay, here we go on this.
Where's your gin? It's right here. Oh, yeah. You may, yes. Okay. Calling us back to order. Thank you very much for coming. Continued public hearing on the application of Stone Arch Development for site review plan for proposed of the redevelopment of property located at 112 Front Streets. Proposed proposal includes the demolition of existing buildings and new construction of 17 townhouse-style condominium units and associated site improvements. Subjected properties located in the C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District identified by tax map parcel number 73-14 and its planning case number 24-17. And Dave, you have some comments, I believe.
Thank you. The applicant, just historical background here. The applicant appeared before the board at the January 23rd, 2025 meeting to present their plans for the redevelopment of the subject property, at which time the planning board accepted them as complete for review purposes. The public hearing was open for public comment, and a sitewalk was scheduled for Thursday, February 6th, which did occur. At the sitewalk, the applicant mentioned that they were developing a landscape plan that would be submitted prior to the following meeting or the last meeting, however, would not be completed in time to be included in the meeting packet, so they subsequently requested a continuance to tonight's meeting to allow them adequate time to address those issues raised during the sitewalk, as well as the Underwood engineering comments. The applicant has submitted revised plans and supporting documents dated February 19th, 2025, which have been enclosed, your view in response to those comments and matters I just discussed. The applicant is requesting three waivers from the Board Site Plan Review and Regulations as outlined in the waiver request letters previously mailed and then a recent one, 219, that they can discuss. There's a roadway and fire lane waiver grading within five feet and a stormwater for redevelopment standards waiver motion. We also received numerous letters and emails have been received from abutters and residents in the neighborhood, and they were included in the meeting materials previously provided for the 213, but additional comments received have also been included. So you got a lot of emails and letters from the, from the abutters. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess ready to bring us up to speed?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates.
Excuse me for one minute.
Yes, sir.
I've got a little business to tend to. Well, you're joining, you'll be acting now in this case, and you're back with us acting?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. Carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you for the upgrade, allowing me to interrupt.
So you've appointed Marty and Dean?
Marty and Dean.
To act on this case? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Just clarification for the minutes. Absolutely. And just, just for reiteration, my name's Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates, representing the applicant tonight. John O'Neill from Stone Arch Development is here with us as well. So as Dave mentioned, we, we did have a sitewalk with the abutters and with those board members brave enough to, to head out in the five-degree weather that particular morning. And I think, I think we, we really have come up with, you know, resolution to many of the comments that, that we heard. The biggest and first thing you'll notice about the difference between this layout and the former one is, oh, sorry, is the driveway coming in formerly went much closer to these buildings, and we had two parking bays over here. That has been revised to pull this away from the buildings so that now all of the units have two parking spaces in front of their garages. So we actually end up with a net plus on the parking total, slightly less in pervious pavement. And as Dave mentioned, there was a, another waiver that came up through talking with Underwood in their first review memo. And that is, that is actually specifically out of TRC because it was requested, actually by the municipal reviewing engineer, that this section of the entrance drive be conventional pavement. My understanding is their concern was for vehicular turning, you know, the propensity for spalling of the aggregate within the pervious pavement, pitting out and whatnot. So we proposed that. In order to deal with the stormwater, we have to propose a small catch basin here, and I think what we had originally proposed was a six-inch pipe that ties into the existing according to Section 9 of the Site Plan and Subdivision Regulations. That is not allowed. You are not allowed to tie in a redevelopment site into existing drainage. However, we reviewed that with the town's engineer, the, the actual town engineer, not Underwood, the third-party consulting engineer, and he had no problem with it. His only comment was, could you make that an eight-inch pipe as opposed to a six-inch pipe, which we, we happily took care of. And if you look at the drainage calculations for what is actually draining to that catch basin and ultimately the existing catch basin in the street, we are talking about .12 cubic feet per second under a two-year storm, up to .36 cubic feet per second under the 50-year storm. And I'll remind you, we had this conversation with the abutters when we were on the sitewalk. The 50-year storm in this location is seven and a half inches of rain in 24 hours. That is one heck of a storm. Then we did go through with the landscape designer and had a much more robust landscape design plan attached. And may I just approach the laptop to switch plans here?
Certainly.
I apologize.
Just make it snappy. Oh.
Oh.
Miracle technology. Boop. Don't let me down now. Why is it every time you do this? It always gets you. Okay. So you're moving to the landscape plan?
That's on the front.
Okay, we did it already with our top tech plan.
And so Lee's McNaughton, who is a land designer out of Brentwood, went through and in concert with, with particularly our abutter, our immediate abutter, on the, what would be the southeasterly side of the property, which is where the driveway is closest, made some recommendations and requests with regard to what be planted there, and I think we've addressed that. You'll note on this plan as well, there's a proposed eight-inch gray vinyl fence to be placed in strategic areas to block the abutters' views before you get to the very, as I mentioned, robust planting scheme she's got. And on this, she notes existing trees, existing mature trees that will remain, as well as a significant amount of trees to be planted. Stormwater is, is again, all taken care of with the two ponds, one in this location, one in this location, and then the remaining area gets infiltrated either through the pervious pavement, the pervious pavers, and pave, paver walkways in the back. So I guess with that, that kind of brings you up to speed on the major changes to the proposal, and I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have.
How about stormwater coming off the buildings?
That actually is, the, the roof runoff is being piped into the reservoir layer of the pervious pavement. And there's, there's plenty of capacity in there to handle that.
Questions?
I have one. Okay. Fencing to respect the cemetery? And I asked on the sitewalk about a fence that abuts the cemetery in that back area there, and was told that there would be a fence? Is there a fence in your plans?
If I may, John O'Neill. I spoke with Lee's McNaughton. I spent two hours out there with her, really trying to see what the right answer was for landscaping. And, you know, I have a degree in landscape management 25 years ago, but the bottom line is, she didn't think it was appropriate. She thought that it was, this is, this is what we'd like to show. If you think it's appropriate, you can make the change. But she thought it was much more appropriate to create a dense forest of shrubbery.
Yeah, I, I, I'll repeat what I said on the sitewalk. That's a cemetery with a lot of older graves and stuff. I'm not comfortable with complete access from one yard to another. Well, there's a fence there now.
I was going to say.
There's a six-foot chain link fence that's on the cemetery property.
Yeah, chain link fence is there.
That's staying.
Well, that's what I was asking.
No, that can't be removed. It's not on their property.
That's on their property.
I was told on the sitewalk that that was not, okay.
They said that, but the granite bounds are on this side of the fence.
I can only go by what I was.
No, that's on, I think we can all agree. That chain link fence is on the cemetery.
Yes.
Property.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Completely misunderstood your.
On the sitewalk, I was told otherwise.
So there will be no access unless you want to scale the six-foot chain link fence.
Okay. One of the, our cemetery is respected.
With the plantings there, that should be okay then.
Yes. I thought it was belonging to this property based on what I was told on the sitewalk. So I'm good. Thank you.
Did you say a gray, gray vinyl fence? Is that what I heard you say? Not a white?
It says white on the plan.
No, there's, it's gray in the, when you come into the entrance on the south side. This section is gray.
The lower section. The lower section.
That's gray. Then you got white, white, white. Yes.
Why, why the difference? Just curious.
I believe it was, it was simply because the, the abutter at Lot 106 preferred that, that color.
Gray makes sense.
If I made some more enhanced fence, so it has a double side, it has sound grading as well and it's taller. So there's a lot of fencing out there now. Everybody gets tired of the old white fence. But I wanted to make sure that it was, looked good on both sides, not just her side, but my side. So we're actually coming up with a stone format, to be quite honest with you. Very attractive.
Okay.
Mine is stone.
Stone fence.
Stone fence.
Yes. Yeah, it's gray, but it's stone. Has a nice stone look.
I think I just saw one of those today, actually.
I'm a little concerned with the driveway being so close on the property line.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, the only solution is to take one unit out of there, make the, the front building is three units and a little more space there and get the driveway a decent distance back from the property line.
I agree, Lang.
I do too. There has to be.
That's what I feel. Would improve it, yeah. They're doing nice plantings there, by the way. Yes, yeah.
Beautiful.
Is that the waiver that they're asking for?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So they wouldn't need the waiver if they have one, unless you.
Shouldn't unless for some reason in doing that work, they have to work to the line and then replace the soil and the grass and so on.
Yeah, and just to be clear, Mr. Kennedy, that even though we push that five feet away, there still may be grading required.
Yeah.
Which is okay.
Within that area, which, which is still going to require a waiver because it says even, even grading within five feet of a, an abutting parcel would need the waiver. So are you saying the edge of pavement's five feet away from the property line now? No, I think we measured it in the field, Dave, and it was about four. Okay. All right, I thought you just said that. Okay. No, no, I said even if we did, suggested by the chairman, it would likely still require some grading within that five-foot area.
Could I, could you describe the distance on the plan? Boy, it doesn't look like four feet. It looks less than that. You're saying there's four feet between the pavement and the property line?
Three or four, yeah. That's what we measured in the field.
But on your plans, what does it say?
Is it three?
I don't think we dimensioned it, but.
To me, I'm looking, it looks like one or two. I mean, it looks like it's right on the.
Yeah, I understand. It does look small, but it is, it is three probably.
Right at the entrance.
It's three, not four. It's three, not four. It's still, okay.
Three, three to four, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's, that's what we measured when we were in the field because we actually found the monuments that we were able to pull to the stakes.
It certainly doesn't look like that on your plan, though. At the entrance, it does, but.
Well, you're going off the landscape plan? You're going off the site plan?
Because that's what we're looking for.
You probably need to go off the site plan because that has the property line. The landscape plan, kind of really, it does, yeah, it's the outside of that gray is, is the property line. There's a line there in the middle. That's the fence. So the fence is set off. It's, it's about that.
I'm sorry, about what?
It's three, three, yeah.
Shouldn't they show that distance on the plan? I mean, you could put that distance, you could put that distance on the plan.
I could, sure.
Other comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, John.
I like what you did with the sidewalks and the sidewalk between the buildings. Could you, could you have both ends of the sidewalk reach the, reach the parking lot? Just, you know, if I'm in unit N, I don't have to walk all the way down the end of the building. Am I to put it on both ends of the building?
Well, we actually had that connection made and as the landscape designer was going through her design work, she said that you're, you're really better off not to have that. It allows her to save a couple of trees and provide some additional plantings on that northerly side of that, of that building.
This is a trade-off.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, in reality, it's, it's going to be graded lawn area. So if they really want to walk around that north side of that building to get to the parking lot, Mr. Gruber, they certainly can. It just won't be on a pervious paver sidewalk. There are, she shows them. I think those are in the orange.
Do they get into the units? Do they have to go around the back or do they go in through the garage?
Typically, more often than not, they're going to drive into their garages.
Go up.
Through there, yeah.
So guests would have to.
Is there any way we could cut up the lines there? You've got one, two, three, four shoeboxes. Could you bring units in two, three feet, just a little variety to make them individual? More of a neighborhood?
Staggering them, I mean? Staggering the units?
Staggering, yeah.
I would imagine that could be done.
Break up that line, because this is my line. Looks like a New Jersey motel. Okay?
Where have I heard that?
I'd like to think it's going to be a little neighborhood.
What we're trying to accomplish was a nice federal look on the front. So the front was very important to be straight across. The front.
Well, what's interesting to me, though, you've got the front facing the side yards. Why don't you put the front on the front of the building one? So I drive into the front, my garage is right there in the back, so back of the house?
You don't want to drive into off a front street into a garage. It'd be a little rough.
I don't.
We can certainly stagger them. There's no question about that. I was trying to create a federal straight front look. It's what you see typically in Exeter. You see a tremendous amount of straight fronts in Exeter.
Yeah.
For the front building? You're talking about all of them. You weren't talking about the front, but.
All of them, yeah. Some, some, even though it's the back of my house, at least there's a difference between the unit next door and I make sure I'm going into the right garage after I've had a couple.
Getting to wondering.
Root beers, I understand.
And to that end, Mr. Chairman, it would appear the only building that that would not be very easy to do the staggering with would be that front building, simply because of the, the way it's positioned, to the right-of-way setback, you know, there's, there's not a lot of extra room in the little access drive as well as the parking spaces in front of those garages. You know, I mean, he might be able to do a foot or two, but three or four is, is probably going to make a mess.
Oh, yeah. No, a foot or two, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that's, everybody's going to see that front.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, the walkway, I thought last time, the walkway in the, you know, front of the buildings, in the back, extended all the way to the sidewalk on Front Street. Was I mistaken? No, I think it, it peeled off into the, the drive access to the units one through four. I thought it did and I was like, oh, I like that. No, because we've always had that infiltration pond up there, Dave.
Ah, yes.
Okay. I thought it went on the outside. Maybe I was.
Build a little bridge over the pond.
But it's not a public sidewalk, so.
And Lang, we do have one of the architectural renderings, if you'd like to see it, of that front building.
Yeah, I think.
Is that something you'd like to take a peek at?
Wasn't that in our previous packet?
It was.
Yeah, I've got it. I'll look at it again. Yep, thank you. I'll pull it out.
Excellent.
From the pile.
If you lost a unit in Building 3 and turned Building 2 and 3 to face each other, then that would, that would make the chairman happy over here. It wouldn't be just looking at someone's backyard.
Turn Building 2 and 3 to face each other?
Yeah, you'd have a bigger grass area in the middle of those two buildings probably. And then you'd share like a driveway with Building 2 and 1, where you have a common like driveway into the garages.
Yeah, I think that's going to push the rest of that driveway because the length of those buildings towards the Gil Street of Butters, which we were trying to keep away from.
But they're, they're looking at the side of the first and fourth building already. And it might, the side of the building might look better than the garage. Big green space in the middle.
I can review that, you know, if, if the developer is, is willing to entertain that. But I'm concerned about where that's going to push the driveway to, to be quite honest with you, Mr. Gruber.
And, and all the plantings too.
Well, there's going to be, you know, there's more plantings in between the fronts of those two buildings because there's more room there. The green space gets moved. And you're not looking at the.
Take that building and then they can do it the same way, spinning those two.
Two and three, yeah. Yeah, it looks nicer based on the lengths of those.
It's all a little space. We'll have to take a look at that.
But then, what you're looking at from the bottom of the pictures, you're looking at the backs of all the buildings. Change that. And it wouldn't have the second and third building, you know, directly looking into.
Are you saying turn this, take this building and turn it?
Yep.
You'd probably violate the SEPEx on either side.
I said you're going to lose, you're going to lose a unit. Which is probably, that kills probably any thought of it. But I'm saying turn the second and third building so they face each other. Then the backs of Building, Building 1 and the back of Building 2 face each other, 3 and 4 do the same. And they're not looking, you know, the front of that building is, is Little Building 2 and 3, you have to look in, directly into someone's yard and there's not a lot of space there. But you, you pick up green space between those two buildings that you, you know, lose a little.
It's really tight.
Yes, tight now.
Well, while I open the public portion of meeting, if I would like to comment, please step to the microphone and share your thoughts with us, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim Nealon. Live at 5 Gil Street, here with my wife, Kristen. We're abutters. Three quick points. First of all, we all know that Exeter is a very special town. One of the main things that makes it so special is that the town, over the years, has preserved its wonderful historic patrimony, which includes its historic neighborhoods, which represent every period of our 400-year history, colonial, federal, Victorian, et cetera. And our housing stock and our iconic neighborhoods like Gil Street are what gives the town its unique character. If you want to change that character, it's very easy to do. And the easiest way to do it is to knock down our historic buildings and our ancient trees and replace them with high-density townhouse developments. And we will cease to be Exeter, Seabrook, or some, some other place. That's the first point. Second point, I actually want to thank the board for the way you conducted yourself with the last, in the last session. I was very proud and felt very represented by the way you mixed it up with the developer and called him out on things like design and density and traffic and, and things that are just very, very important to the character of our town. And I'm going to implore you to show that same civic spirit with these developers and represent us again so we can all be proud of you again. Sounds like I'm being facetious. I'm not. I felt very well represented by the way you conducted yourselves. We believe that this development as proposed is completely out of character with the neighborhood and it's too dense. The developers referred to it as Federalist Architecture. I know my American architecture. You know your American architecture. It's not Federalist. It's institutional, it's utilitarian. But whatever it is, it's out of character with the Victorian neighborhood of Gil Street. It's also just too dense. Finally, we are abutters where the driveway bumps up against our property line. We vehemently oppose all three of those waivers. Weren't aware of the third waiver, which, which came up tonight, but that gives me even more pause. And especially as Dave says, they're going to have to pitch, wherever the driveway is, it's going to have to be pitched down towards our property. What I would suggest is that the developer put the driveway on his property, he's got 1.6 acres to play with, and keep it away from our property. That would seem to me to be fair. Thanks very much.
Good evening, planning board. I'm Charlie French. I live at 9 Gil Street, which is probably at property there. I have similar concerns as Jim. I am trained as a planner. I went to graduate school for that and served as a planner for many years. And I feel that the scale of this development is really out of whack with the surrounding neighborhoods, the density, the scale, and the character compared to the historic neighborhoods in the vicinity. So that's a concern. I think from a personal standpoint as abutters, the screening in the view shed is a concern to me. I understood that one of you had mentioned potentially flipping the buildings from, as an abutter. My concern would, that would put the road even closer to us and it would, the screening between the development and our property would be even less. And so I think from a view standpoint, I think that would be even more challenging for us. We have a pool in the backyard, we have a hot tub, and the kids spend most of their summer out in the backyard. And so we have some concerns about how this is going to affect our livelihood, not opposed to housing, but really want to make sure that it's in scale and character and want to make sure that there's adequate screening so that both for our sake and for the people that move in, so that they're not looking at us constantly. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Jeff Garskow, 111 Front Street. I have a, I have a few points, but I wanted to maybe start with number three after the new waiver was, was proposed. I don't think there should be any waivers on this project. This is a 1.6, 1.7 acre parcel. We're looking at 17 units and we're trying to squeeze this in here with waivers for driveway, waivers for a number of different things. And then today, when I was looking at this, I saw the parking and I see the additional, I'm not going to use the little pointer thing, I'll just pull. The additional parking looks like it's right here, it's right behind these units. And I'm not sure how this tandem parking is going to work. The way it looks to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, the way it looks to me is that there is no guest parking anymore. Not sure if that could be addressed. That's a problem. And I think it could be solved by taking out maybe four or five units. There'd be, there'd be plenty of space for this development. If there was a unit less in each building, you could turn the buildings if you wanted to at that point, possibly, but it's, it's just too dense. That brings me to my first point. I'm not sure if anybody knows the history of this lot. Some of you guys have been around a lot longer than me in town, some of you folks too. Dave, I don't know if you know the history of the lot, the, you know, what the zoning was in this lot, how it changed?
Yeah, we, we looked into that with Barb because someone requested it.
That was me.
Yeah.
So I'll just go over it quick. From the start of zoning in the 70s through 1988, this parcel was primarily R2 with some C1 that came right in the beginning of the parcel, I'd say. I didn't measure it, it was tough to see on the old tax maps, but it was about a third, I'd say, maybe a little more than a third, was C1 that went across the front of this. And the rest of it was R2. And that was the case with maybe one other parcel, but a lot of them were, because they were short stubby parcels, were already in C1. So there was, there was a town warrant, March of 1988, which passed, by the way. And the, the purpose of the warrant, it really didn't have anything to do with this specific property, wasn't named in any way, but it is a property that had multiple zoning on one parcel. So being that it had multiple zoning, the point of the warrant was to turn parcels that had multiple zoning into one zone and, and, and go around that parcel, whatever parcel would be the last parcel. So I had asked, Dave's right, I had asked Barb and Doug to take a look at the history of it. So Barb had come up with what I just mentioned, which I didn't know, and showed me the results of the, of the, of the vote, which meant it passed. But there was some information missing. So she kept looking and she went over the minutes of the planning board from, had to be maybe August of '87 through January of '88, to try to find any discussion about how they were going to rewrite those areas. In other words, which zones? If you have two zones, for example, on a property, how does it become one zone over another zone? And the result of it surprised me a little bit. The result of it was there was no information about that anywhere. And that's why I'm coming up here to ask the question. Does anybody have any other information? Does anybody have any other information about this? Anybody know about it?
No, we didn't tell a lie back then and I don't know if it would matter.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure it would matter either, but my point is that we don't know. And, and look, I'm just gonna, there's one other point that's related to this. If you look at the assessing card for this property, it's R2. You can look it up right now. I looked it up months ago and it's still R2. At one point, this was primarily R2. I'm sure of it. I've looked at the old tax map. 1979, exact date of the tax map. So who made the call? Was it, was it a building inspector that went to lunch and decided he was gonna call it the map, returned the call with the map company? Map company says, hey, I don't know what to do with this thing. What do you, what do you want to do? Hey, just, just draw it right around. It's all right, it's in the front. I don't know. Nobody here knows. Nobody at the town can tell me. That's a problem, folks. It's a problem. So, so then we get, you know, we get this parcel sold. They paid what they paid for the parcel. And we're trying to wedge 17 units into a parcel and we don't even know why it was C1 in the first place. If anything, it was partly C1 and then it was all R2. So maybe we take a look at the density that it should be if it was still that parcel. Just an idea. But, you know, I need, I need you folks to think about it. We've got all these butters, people that are here, people that are on vacation this week. Tough week to have both of these. I saw the 108 presentation online. And, and then this one. There are a lot fewer people here than there were at the previous meeting. I think I know why. I know some of them, you know? They're in Florida, they're doing other things, probably worried about this meeting. They should be. All right, well, that, that about covers the, the second thing. The third is more of a question. Well, just to, just to back up just for a second, just one statement. The problem, the biggest problem is there's no proof of a legal decision that was made between the two zones. We can't find it. If somebody there has it, somebody out there, somebody else? Great, resolution. If not, it's something I think the board should consider. Really do. I would appreciate it. I think all the butters would too. The third is for the builder. I want to ask him directly in, in here, regarding residential units. Townhouse units. That's a, that's a style. Residential is a type of unit. We know it's gonna be used for residential purposes. Townhouse is a style. Okay? You could have a townhouse apartment, you could have a townhouse condominium. Agreed? I think everybody might be under the impression, and it might be a true impression, that these units are gonna be built, marketed and sold as individual condominiums. I have a question as to whether that's the case. And I'd, I'd like the, the builder, the developer to tell us either way definitively, yes, they're gonna be condominiums, sold individually, taxed as condominiums? Or is this gonna be an apartment complex and taxed as for individual buildings? Or whatever, however you tax that, I don't know. Not necessary. And the reason I ask that is I, I believe that, that these folks have a management company that manages apartments, even some brand-new ones. And I think the distinction is important. It's, it's important because of, it's important because when people buy a home, there's a certain pride of homeownership. Like all the folks that are in this room that own homes and that are butters. When you're a renter, you might be a great person. You could be nice and clean and wonderful and, and somebody I'd like to live right next to. But you're more likely to get up and leave after a year lease, aren't you?
Okay.
I don't know. But I mean, but I, I just, I, I think, I think, I just think everybody should know one way or the other. What are these? And it's okay if somebody disagrees with me. It's my, it's, 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 I would like to know. If nobody else wants to know, it's fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chick, could I ask a question of the town planner?
Sure.
In the research that Barb did on zoning change, there was no, nothing on the war, a warrant article to change the zoning that could be found?
Yeah, no, the warrant article said the, the intent, I don't have it in front of me. But the intent was to kind of minimize or eliminate most of the parcels that were bisected by zoning. So it, it, you know, there were, there were a lot of parcels, apparently. That's what I'm guessing. There were probably townwide, there was a lot of parcels with half-commercial, half-residential, half-industrial, half-commercial, whatever it is, right? They, like, the zonings bifurcated these parcels. So this was a warrant article to say, okay, make those changes. It was general, but then the, the map before the zoning change, the zoning map, was the front portion of this parcel was commercial and the rear was residential. The map that was created after was the map we see today and it was all commercial.
And I was just wondering, sorry.
Yeah, please use the microphone.
Jeff Garskow again. And I was just wondering how the decision was made to go with the C1, not the R2? When, in, in zoning, you know, generally in zoning situations, I was on the zoning board in Brentwood for years as well. Generally, what I saw, it was years ago, but, you know, there are, there are certain criteria that you looked at when you change zoning in a parcel. You, you looked at what the parcel, what the current use of the parcel was.
Use, yep.
Residential, right? It's a historic residential house. What, what's, you know, another criteria would be, the butters, what are the uses of the properties around you? Residential, all residential. And there, there are several others. I left my notes over there. I had one or two others written down, very sorry. But, but it, it just seems to me like, out of the criteria that I would normally use, like, say there were, there were six criteria, four to five of them absolutely pointed to this being a residential parcel. And so it just didn't make sense to me. It just doesn't make sense that in 1988, that, you know, so many people lost their minds and decided this should be C1, when it, everything, everything pointed to something else.
Well, I mean, I, I know the neighborhood. So I can say, I could see how that could happen, but no, I wasn't there. I was born here. I've lived my entire life here. But that area does have mixed, mixed that, right? Where the art gallery is, that was a small grocery store.
Yeah, that was the only one right there.
And residential in the back. If you go a little bit closer to the railroad tracks, there was Fresh Fish Daily till recently, where the house behind that was literally, they had to just change the address because it was still considered Front Street. Because it was a business in the front and commercial in the middle.
Outside of the art gallery, those are all short lots though. Those have all been in the C1 already.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that, that whole area, not Gil Street, but that area does have some commercial and some residential.
Yeah, right. And I guess my question, and I, I don't question that. I, I live right there, I, I get it, we all get that. It's more, you know, where's the proof that somebody made a decision? I, I, it's not there. And then the decision that was made doesn't make any sense based on what was there. We're gonna take this residential historic home, that makes perfect sense, we're just gonna make it commercial. What? I mean, I don't get it. I don't know. I think it just, I just wanted it on record here. That the research was done. I didn't know where the research was going, guys. I thought there was gonna be a definitive end and it was gonna say, it was gonna say, okay, on this date, this, this happened and, okay, sorry. There are minutes that prove it. But that's not what happened. So, I mean, everybody, the butters deserve to know. You guys deserve to know. And even the developers, they certainly deserve to know as well, that I found it.
Peter Dow is the town planner then?
Ah, yes.
What?
Uh, is he still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah.
I don't know. I know of Mr. Dow, perhaps the way that he used to work for the town.
I think you're right.
Okay, thank you.
He's my age, he's young.
Well, doesn't matter. That part doesn't matter. I'm just saying, okay.
So you, so you have his phone number?
I do, I probably do.
Okay.
But he, he lives in town, right across from the library. He might be able to.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing out.
No, anything. I'm surprised Doug doesn't remember. I just got you that.
I, I think it was maybe right after his time. May, I mean, right before his time, sorry.
Right before Doug's time.
I think so. And it was, it was a year before Barbara's time because she had, she had talked with me about it. And she has no idea. And I, when I said to her, I said, look, you know, I think I really have to mention something about this in the meeting. And I, I said, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say that you did the research. I'm just gonna tell, you know, what, what we found. And she, she was more than happy for that to happen. I mean, she just, look, I'm just trying to get to the truth. What is it? And, and should this have been a C1 parcel? I get it, I get it. It's a C1 parcel right now. I understand. But should it have been? And, and if that's the, if the, if the answer is no, I think the answer is no. You know, I hope you folks consider that with the density on this project. There's not enough parking here. There's not, there's gonna be parking. People are gonna be parking all the way up down Front Street. They're gonna be on Gil, they'll be on Union Street. They just will. Two and a half people per condo, in a three to four-bedroom condo? No way. The averages, the averages take, the averages, the state averages, they take into account one bedrooms, two bedrooms, yeah, three bedrooms, four bedrooms. But the average comes out at 2.5, 2.3, 2.5. So you're looking at at least three to four people per household. I'd say three absolute minimum. No matter what we were told. It's just fallacy. Fallacy. Cars, come on, 36, 38, now we can't park them. They're gonna be out on Front Street. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Wanted to make sure you guys can see me. I'm David Harrington, 114 Front Street. So a lot of discussion about this side of the project. We are that house. So the other side of the project, which was built, my son is here. I think that house has been standing since 1848. I'm gonna just make a direct appeal to Mr. O'Neill. I don't know if that's appropriate. But the size of this project and the fact that this unit, wall to wall, is 20 feet from a tiny little 1848 house is oppressive. And I beg you, just like they did in the last project, which I believe is yours too, to shrink this project. It's America. Do what you want, but to fit the neighborhood, please consider shrinking the project. Specifics. I'm concerned with the fire risk. 20 feet between those buildings? You're asking for a waiver in a small curb cut? I've seen the drawings. Has the fire department signed off on how small this is for their ladder truck? The answer I got was, well, we're gonna put sprinklers in. What sprinklers have they been tested? What's the water pressure? Will the sprinklers in this unit put a fire out before that fire jumps 20 feet to my house? Who's liable for that if there's a death in my house? Does a resident of my property that sometimes has to use a wheelchair? If that front building is shrunk and brought further away from my property and brought further away from the entry drive and center, that may solve a lot of the issues, at least that this butter has.
Three units, seven or four, yep.
I'm not sure if the town has liability if the fire risk isn't mitigated in a project like this. If waivers are granted and then a tragedy happens, I don't know if the town has liability. I asked the question. I've, the landscape plan, it is nice. But I'd like some specifics. Not just six-foot-high fence that's gonna abut my property? What model? What brand? Who's installing it? I'd like to know what it looks like. Grading. I believe there's grading potentially also on our side within five feet of the property line. We are doing a lot of talking about this side, not much talking about that side. Like some more specifics. I haven't heard anybody mention anything about quality of life with headlights. Every car that comes in here and has to turn into their parking space or into their garage is gonna be shining their headlights directly into my home, 20 feet away. My opinion is that this property does not fit with the neighborhood, similar to the Portsmouth Avenue discussion that you just had. These buildings are towering at 35 feet over a house that was built in 1848. Has there been a traffic study done on this property? Front Street is a nightmare. Ask the police. Come to my house, I'll make you coffee. You can sit on the front porch and you can watch the diesel trucks rip up and down Front Street. Someone will die. This blocks the view. Go there tonight, take a look at the snow. I can't get out of my driveway with the snow right now. Someone will die. Traffic study needs to be done. And my last question is, if this is not commercial potentially, we'll have to talk afterwards. I believe our house is this mixed, whatever you guys call it, it's C1. I don't, I don't wanna see such a high-density unit there 'cause I don't have to turn my property into a commercial property. Dog kennel. Something that makes a lot of noise. I'm just joking. Not really. So in closing, I just ask that the board consider the fact that there are historical houses next door. Even this one maybe qualify? And maybe implore them to shrink this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Campbell. My wife and I live at Seven River Woods Drive. I was at the last planning board meeting on this development. And as, and at that time, I described an 1850s house that was falling apart at 110 High Street, but was successfully reclaimed by some renovation represive, preservationists, showing that the old house can be restored successfully. We could do that here. However, this idea unfortunately was not accepted by the owner of this property, even though one of the tenants of our master plan is to preserve and nature, and nurture, excuse me, the historic nature of our town. That aside, I would like to ask a question or two. Is there workforce housing component to this development at all? I haven't asked the question. I didn't think so. I think it's, no, okay. The picture in the front, the picture of the front apartment that was in the Sea Coast Line online when the development was first proposed, showed a large, plain, five, now four-unit building at the front of the lot. A quote in the paper stated that the front four units, now four units, would fit in nicely with the stately colonial homes on Front Street. I'm not an architect, but could the applicant explain that statement? How does the flat nature of this apartment house, really, fit in with nice, stately homes there? And he might also comment on how this development fits in with the attractive architecture of houses on Gil Street. The townhouses on Franklin Street and Main Street, near Lincoln Street, have some character. I don't see that this, see this in these townhouses. have some character. I don't see that this, see this in these townhouses. Is it possible to revise the looks so that it fits in more in the character with the neighborhood? I would also ask the board if this development fits in with the ideas and concepts from for development put forth in our town master plan. The master plan recommends that density requirements should be reasonable. This development is incorporating 17 housing units on 1.6 acres. Or another way to look at it, is replacing one house, which might have a family in it, living there, if, family living there, as opposed to 17 houses with two to five people occupants for possible 34 to 85 people living in that one area. Or, in a neighborhood, this is in a neighborhood with single-family homes on separate lots. The master plan states in different places that the plan is to serve as one of our primary tools for planning proactively for the Exeter's development. It states, "Select Board and Town Boards and Commissions will use this plan to serve as a strategic framework for decision-making as to providing aspirational vision for the community looking forward." Is this what is being done here? Is this how we want to grow? Is this how we should treat our historical buildings? Finally, what does this development do for the town, but provide a lot of very average-looking housing? And by the way, I agree with Lang, that you had trouble finding all of those houses if you came home late at night, because they all look the same. They all look as one, different, they all look, you have the same book in the front. Is this what the master plan promoted in its plan to preserve and develop the wonderful characters of this town? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Gastic French at 9 Gil Street. I came and left three kids alone right now because I got a little image of what was up here. And when we did the walkabout meeting, I spoke to three gentlemen who said, "Absolutely, we'll give you a six-foot-seater fence behind that property of yours, because that would make a lot of sense, given, you know, the sparsity of the trees and the fact that we already have a fence there." And I'm just wondering if this is all just a formality, what the point of this process is, if we can have conversations that are not in good faith. That those, when we spoke, the planning board helped us understand that this needed to be reflected in the plan, right? So I said, you know, we, I've got a lot of promises. The day Mr. McCarrcar closed on the property, I met him at the back fence, and he said, you know, "We care, we understand that the people of Gil Street really have care for their property, and we wanna make sure," and, you know, he talked about the six-foot fence that day. Yet it's not here, right? Am I correct? It's not here, right? So, I guess I just urge you to really think about whether, we are all kind of giving a lot of input, yet nothing's budged at all. So it feels like this is a performative process at this moment, and I really think your time and our time is worth a lot more than that. And our town is worth putting some guardrails on. Our town's not just a place to profit. So I would urge you that unless they're gonna do things that they say and gave their word as neighbors, as I'm a local, then we don't move forward, because this is not something that we can ever go back on. The time is now, and I would appreciate minimally that respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morissette.
Rory Morissette, and I'm in the butter on 12 and 14 Parker. I'm concerned about the size of the project, and the added traffic. Front Street is a nightmare. And like the gentleman said, the snow piles and all that stuff at the end of our street was horrendous. I had to start going down Iber Court because there was an ice dam at the end of Parker Street, and two ruts, and I thought you could go over it safely, and I almost tore my muffler off. So I know, you know, things are tight there, they're old streets. The piping, I know on our street, last time they had it dug up, you know, I was shocked at what kind of piping there was underground there. I'm not sure what Front Street has. I mean, they would have to flush the lines on Parker Street every so often, because we would have backups and that. I have some pooling of water when we have heavy rains in my backyard that abuts this property. And, you know, I'm concerned, you know, with the grading, you know, will that add to that problem? It's not on every occasion, but when you have a good heavy rain, or when the snow's all melting, you know, I do have ponding that happens. Also, I'm understanding that there would be a seater fence running on the Parker Street side of the property also. I'm not sure what this kind of plantings, you know, will give me for, you know, relief, having to look, you know, into their front yards and that. There's a school close by. You've got Lincoln Street, you've got the School Street building that has houses, children. I just really think we're trying to put a whole lot of stuff on a small lot. And I've lived there on Parker Street my whole life, and played in Dave Merrill's backyard. There was never any commercial businesses there when I was growing up.
Thank you.
Mr. Morissette, I'm sorry, could you point to where your property is before, I'm sorry you went and said that.
It would be on these two, in this section here, 12 and 14, and then 16, which was my grandfather's house way back. The Millers live there now, is on that side.
Okay, thank you.
On sheet two of the existing conditions plan, has the names of the people, and you can see his.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, just if.
It was quicker just to ask him at that point, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, for reference. If you wanna know all the abutters, they're on there.
I know, I get it. I know it's there, but I, thanks. It's okay.
Don't ask me.
Just wanted to address the board. So I appreciate the abutter from 111, lives in the duplex across the street, bringing up the zoning. This is a planning board meeting, not a zoning meeting. So I just wanted to mention that. And also, there's been a lot of discussion on this project about the home, the history, you know. Bill, I haven't been here 40 years, but I've been here for over 30, it's trustee of our church, and I've been a long member of the community. I did speak to a lot of the abutters, and we did talk about fencing. I wanna address that, where the fencing on the Gil Street side, it's chain-linked, and during the site walk, we talked about doing fencing. There's some trees, and I believe some of you said some of the shrubs that grow up through the fences in the springtime, they flower and everything else. So maybe not your particular property, but if you look down the line, they are. So in order to put a fence there, which we could, all that needs to get removed, and then the fence goes in place. So just, it's, so what we did was hired a professional landscaper who went in with a mix of fencing and landscape, flowering shrubs, evergreens. The property on the end, the gentleman who's in the commercially zone property, right over here to this side, has white vinyl. So in order to keep it, we went with one vinyl there. We worked with Adele, she wanted an eight-foot fence, a specific look, so we accommodated that. There's gonna be landscaping on both sides, some plants that she wanted specifically on her property. She has that. So I feel we've worked with all the abutters in regard to the best that we could. In regards to some of the comments, if you look across the street, 111, 113's a duplex. If you go next to that, there's multifamily. If you go beyond that, I believe it's called the condos on Front Street, they're big gray boxes. They used to be the dance studio that my daughter used to go two years ago. Nancy, I'm sure you remember it. That's now a big gray box, not in keeping with the area. And I'd say it was a little offensive to hear the comments about the look of the property, because we went around with our architect, and we went, "If you look at the academy where the crosswalk is, facing the admin office to the right, you have a federal-style home. Two windows, the third floor windows are smaller, red brick chimneys, hip-style roof. You go across the street to the beige one, it's the same. If you go down the street, all those historic homes are flat, they have a portico. These properties are not gonna be like the ones on Lincoln Street where the body shop was before, that has brick on the front and the stairs that look like they belong at a ski lodge. That's just my personal preference, all right? These are not gonna be vinyl-sided. They're gonna have 42-inch wide doors, not 36. They're gonna have real brick chimneys, real brick walkways, and they're white, and the windows are gonna be the same, six over six, and the third-floor window will be smaller to keep it specifically looking like a historic federal." I worked with Julie Gilman and the Heritage Committee. Bill, I believe you were on that. We showed everybody the plans, they applauded them. We told them that we would work with them, no obligation to, but trying to be good neighbors. We worked with them in the design, in the color, in the materials, to try to keep it looking like Exeter. I see some of the other things that go on in town, and they're not. And the piece of property that Mr. Campbell was talking about, the hospital owned it, they wanted to put a parking lot there, they pulled a permit, it was rejected, it's in the historic district.
It's a road, yeah.
Yeah. Go look at it. Look at the overspring in the foundation, look at the pieces of wood that they replaced instead of stripping that roof properly, and the shoddy work that they had done, and the different contractors that they brought in over time continuously changed. I felt bad for the people that purchased that property. So.
They're still there.
They're still there, right. There's a shorting housing. We need housing, nobody wants it in their backyard. Everything we're doing is in allowed use, it's been through technical review, fire signed off, they looked at the water pressure and the fire hydrant, everything, all through technical review. We've gone through that. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this isn't something that's being forced, and it's been through all the proper channels, through the town, and all of the different people that are supposed to look on it and sign off, or else we wouldn't be at this point where we are here tonight. If there's something that someone feels strongly about, you know.
Excuse me, the fence?
Yeah, we could, we could look at that, but then keep in mind, we may have to take down some of the plantings along your fence to put the other fence up.
There are no plantings on our fence. You walked the property line to determine that, at which point you said, "Yeah, let's do it."
All right, so, John, we put a fence there, you can make it a condition of approvals. So we're fine with that. We're not trying to be deceptive. And if you look at this, this is more landscaping than a lot of other people put in. I encourage you to go look at Mr. O'Neill's other projects that he's done. There's a reason I partnered with him when I purchased this, because of the quality of the construction, not just on the interior and the homes themselves, but also on the landscaping and the money that's spent there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I must have missed the meeting at the Heritage Commission. John, you might remember that we approved this. I don't remember that. I don't remember anything like that.
We walked around, and we talked about it, and we talked about saving the house.
That's what, that's what we came up with.
I didn't see the picture until we got the last.
So, I went with, what was his name, Francis, and Julie Gilman, and they looked at it. And the Heritage Committee has no.
You gotta use the microphone, please.
They don't have any jurisdiction.
If we did, we would have saved the house. We talked about saving the house.
You did. And also, the Merrill family that I work closely with, I repeatedly asked them to give me something to mention, because we were gonna take like a block of granite out of the foundation, put it out front like another house further down Front Street has as a marker there, about the family, and we wanted to put something in there. I've gone several times, emailed, contacted them, everything, and they have no desire. They said they took the money, they wanted it to take care of some of their family, it's a large family, and that was it. So the family that lived there was okay with the property. They said when they sold it, they knew that the price they got, that there was a good chance that the building wasn't gonna go down. And again, that's not even, yeah, it was money. Yeah, exactly. And that's not even a purview of this meeting as well. This is the planning board, this is where we are today, and just wanna thank everybody.
Any other comments from the board right now? I'm willing to give a few more minutes, because we've got short-changed 15 minutes, so we've got 15 minutes here.
I'll take 30 seconds, I have nothing prepared.
Oh, that's all right.
Sarah Nelson, I'm at 8 Gil Street, so I'm not in a butter, but on Gil Street. And just a couple comments. One, I feel like a lot of us recognize the balance between maintaining the historic nature of Exeter and the housing crunch that we all know about and understand. And just one quick comment, I just wish there was a, some middle ground between one house on one plus acre and 17. As people have mentioned, there are duplexes around our area, there are houses on Front Street, big historic houses that are going to condos. There's nothing anyone can do about that, they get broken up. Okay, fine, but that's not 17. So 1 to 17, that seems problematic to me, number one. Number two, I'm just gonna ask, has there been a traffic study performed here for this? I think there was.
Traffic memo. Traffic.
A traffic memo. Has there been a real study of the impact of 17 people out of one driveway as opposed to one house out of one driveway? And I say that, living on Gil Street, which, the end of Gil Street is literally right there. So, anyone coming out of this driveway, first of all, there's time of day issues. The entire town of Exeter, the greater Seacoast area cuts through Gil Street, but certainly time of day is, you know, an issue. People who are trying to go to work, there's gonna be a line of 17 people in that road. They won't be able to turn left in the morning. They won't be able to turn right without hitting somebody coming out of Gil Street 25 feet from them. And I just, the proximity of that driveway with Gil Street makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. And there's been some discussion about, can we break up that or relocate it or do something? But this is a hugely problematic area in our town already, as we all know, and there have been studies and traffic assessments, and should we have a traffic circle, and what do we do about all these roads that feed in and the Exeter Inn, and everyone cuts through Gil Street, because nobody wants to go to that, you know, awful intersection, right? And we're about to make a single-family house with one driveway into 17 families coming out of that one place. So for me, the whole traffic situation is, that's a very big issue. We already know it's a dangerous area. There have been pedestrians hit coming out of there making a left turn in that area, in front of that arts building that we're talking about. I just think it's a very dangerous area, and I think it warrants a little more serious consideration about the density of what's about to go in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask a question? Are we still in the right timeframe? I don't wanna go over again like we did earlier.
No, no.
Could someone please explain the difference between a traffic memo and a traffic study? So we all understand that.
Well, I think it would be better for a traffic engineer to explain that, but I've been, you know, I know enough to be a little bit dangerous about traffic. So, the traffic memo just is basically, they do a trip, a trip generation. They look at what the proposed use is, and they look at the ITE, and what, what the traffic's gonna be generated. So you get numbers of cars that will be expected, on average, for this particular use, leaving and exiting the site. What a traffic impact analysis does is it goes, it actually, well, depending on the scope that you define, but it'll look at the roadways and intersections. scope that you define, but it'll look at the roadways and intersections, you know, north, south, east, west, you know, whatever you define the scope, and then, and then actually do traffic counts, like, you know, current-day traffic counts, figure it out, and then add that, and then what impact that addition will have on those various intersections or, or the accessway onto that property. Then, then it will come to a conclusion on what, if any, improvements are needed to those places. And in this case, we, we are getting a, they're building a roundabout at Linden and Pine, so that intersection really wouldn't need to be studied. And then the other intersection at Front Railroad is pretty inadequate, too, but I just put in for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant to redesign that intersection to be bike and ped-friendly.
Interesting. That, I think that does the stuff, right?
Yeah, so, so I don't know, the scope would be limited if you did a traffic impact analysis on this. T R C discussed it and didn't feel it was necessary based on the number of units.
I just wanted to educate us all, or re-educate, to make sure everyone knew the difference between a memo and a study, or an impact study. Thank you.
Yeah, they just do trip gen, it's like a trip gen, chip generation memo. That's, that's all it does, is set forth the trip generation.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, as you know, not everybody heads out at the same time.
Right, so when they're doing their analysis, and when they do the counts and all that, yes, we've had that discussion.
Adele?
I was going to say, do they take in...
Can they use a microphone?
Just grab a mic, yeah, right there, thanks.
Pass it over, please, and thank you.
Thank you. My question is, do they take in...
Introduce yourself, please.
What? Oh, Adele Robertson, 106 Front Street, thank you. My question is, when they do this analysis, during the school year, it's a lot of traffic, particularly right now, I have a mountain in my backyard, it's difficult to see over the snow, where the snow is, so I hope when they do this analysis, they'll take those things into consideration. When, on Sunday, when the church people come, it's very difficult to pull in and out, and so I would hope that when they do this analysis, they'll consider the time of year when they do that.
So, can we clarify that we don't know if there will be an analysis? Yeah, yeah. And just so you know, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it's for the record, that's why we have to say names and identify.
I see you, too.
Oh, good.
Might take you off on that, there's something coming up at the art thing soon.
Okay, yes.
Hi, so my name's Maradee Carr, I live at 4 Cross Road. I just wanted to make sure all the abudders got to talk first, since I don't live right there, I live more on the outskirts of the town. But as someone, you know, who loves Exeter and the feel of Exeter, I am, I do consider the house to be a historic, I mean, you know, I think it was, at the youngest, it was built in 1874, which is still over 150 years old, so if, and then the, how Nancy Merrill was like a famous resident who literally wrote the book on Exeter, so I would be really saddened to lose like a historical property like that, and I think it's, if the neighborhood's not considered historic, it definitely is like where I consider it to be the more aesthetic part of the town is beginning, like, to me, that's like the pretty street that leads you into like Water Street, the, and it's like considered part of downtown in my mind. I'm happy to hear that they all want to do vinyl signings and want to like try to give it a more, nicer aesthetic feel, but still, you're crowding it, you're taking what I consider to be a historic home, and bringing in like squeeze, what feels like squeezing in a bunch of condos. But obviously, my ideal would, it'd be, it doesn't change at all, it stays there, but is there a possibility of maybe just having one larger residence in the back, and then keeping the historic home in the front? If that would be a possibility, and maybe switching the idea of what is, it's going to be used for? Yeah, so I just wanted to share some of my concerns with that.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Then I think we need to table this meeting to a date specific. What do we got coming up? The dates, Dave?
We have March 13th and March 27th. There was mention about something about the waivers. Do you want to give the applicant any consensus or thoughts on those?
No, we could.
Because, you know, that might be important information, you know, instead of waiting two weeks, and then get, giving, giving it to them then? I mean, I heard someone say about the, Chairman, you know, you mentioned something about the driveway moving and so forth, but I just wanted to get clarity on that. I think it would be helpful to keep the process moving.
Yeah, yeah. Christian, could you go those, over those?
Yeah, which one was your last to start with?
Oh, number one.
Yeah, I wasn't asking you to vote on them, I just maybe give it up.
So, the first one is to allow the pavement width to be 22 feet as opposed to 24, that just cuts down on impervious surface. Of course, the bulk of this development is going to be impervious pavement, but that's the first one, which we've provided the requisite arguments to. The second one, which I think may be of more interest to you, Mr. Chairman, would be the, the waiver to the site plan and review and subdivision regulations restricting grading within five feet of a property line, that you've already kind of addressed. And then the final one, as I've mentioned, essentially due to us being requested to make conventional pavement out of roughly the first 80 to 100 feet of the driveway entrance, adding a small catch basin and pipe connecting to the, to the existing basin, which the town engineer had absolutely no issue with due to the really, really minimal flow that would actually reach that.
Any deep thinking about those thoughts of those three?
On the pervious pavement for the rest of the site, you mentioned something about the reservoir below. Could you explain that?
There is beneath the filtration media, so you have support gravel, you have filtration media, which is essentially just a, not a loamy sand, but there are organics in it. That is the filtration layer, and then below that, you've got a choker layer, so that, that doesn't wash into the reservoir. And then it's, it's two feet of crushed washed stone.
Okay.
That's what holds the water and allows it to slowly infiltrate.
And how much sand?
Pardon?
How much sand?
Uh, I'll have to look at the detail. I think, I think that that layer is approximately 6 to 8 inches. The filter layer is what I know. Yeah, I believe that's correct.
And the weight of vehicles doesn't compact?
Well, it's, it's designed to support vehicle traffic. And in fact, again, we went through this at T R C with the fire inspector, and he was very comfortable getting his vehicle in and out of there. Thank you.
Marty?
I, I would, I would just say that, given the density, it's, it is dense, the waiver for the grading within the five feet to the existing property, I have a concern with. I, I think the driveway is, is too close to that property line, and to give a waiver for that, given the density is, I guess I have a problem.
I would have a problem with that also.
Yep, I see my head's bopping, so, yep. Any others of any concerns? I think we're okay there.
Thank you.
Thank you for the direction.
Yeah, and the other two waivers don't seem to be problematic to the board, I mean, the straw hole.
I'm interested that the last waiver, why isn't that just part of the plan?
What's that?
The 18-strein.
Well, it is part of the plan, but we need a waiver to allow it, because the redevelopment section of the stormwater regulations state that you cannot tie into an existing...
Thank you.
And we don't want people tying into our existing municipal system, you know, in rare cases, things, you know, okay, we want to, we want to start there. Don't tie into the existing town drainage system, handle all your stormwater on-site. There have been instances, this is certainly not the first one, that it makes sense to tie in, it's usually very little volume, and will not negatively impact the town's existing system. And that's what the town engineer looks at, and determined in this case that it did not, his opinion, so...
And for the record, we do, we have a memo that, from the town engineer. Do we have that writing?
I, we rarely put stuff in writing. He...
Paul, Paul is not like to write.
You're talking to Paul, yeah, you're talking to Paul. We don't get comments from him, but, but I can, I can try to get something in an email, but it's usually discussed at the T R C. I don't know if everything gets in the minutes.
We just keep running into this.
Not that we don't, I don't believe our developer here, but it's just, you know, we'd be more comfortable having something from him.
Cleaner record.
No, absolutely, no, absolutely, yeah, that's, he, you know, he usually, we don't usually say, like, someone's like, "Oh, okay, I don't have an issue with it." We don't usually put that in writing, it just shows up on the plans, but I can follow up and get you that.
Only because it's a waiver.
Get you that for this one, correct.
And I would add, just to...
Or you can get it, Christian.
I, I can get it.
You can get it.
Sure.
Yeah, you can get a hold of Paul and get it, so...
And I would add to this discussion, the only reason we are proposing to add a catch basin and a connection is because the planning board's engineering consultant requested that we make that initial 80 to 100 feet conventional pavement.
Yep.
When, when we had originally submitted, that entire thing was pervious, and we had no such proposal.
And didn't Paul mention that as well at the T R C? I thought Paul...
He said he thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I think he, he agreed with Underwood.
Yes.
Okay, so it's there. All right.
But I don't know if it's actually in the minutes, but...
Well, it doesn't matter, your, your T R C minutes don't have a lot of detail.
Exactly.
I try to read them.
Your view?
I do try to, oh, I have a job to do here. So, anyway, okay, so are we...
Just, if you would, if you were going to come back and ask for that grading within five feet, I want you to double-check your measurements and stuff.
Yeah, we'll label it.
Yes, please.
Yep, Mr. Kennedy requested that, we will absolutely do it.
Okay.
So, which date are we looking at?
Which date are we looking for, Dave?
13th to 27th.
13th is fine by me.
Okay, so I will move to table Planning Board case number 2417 to March 13th, 2025, at the Novak Room at 7:00 P. M. Did I touch everything that time?
You did, good job.
You got it.
Thank you.
How about a second down here from one of our new guys?
Second.
Second, good, okay. Moved to second, and again, this voice forward is okay for this, so those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain, I mean, excuse me, nay, or abstentions. Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, and the public, thank you so much for coming, helping us make a decision.
Okay, let me get organized here.
And we'll do the minutes next time. But we need to, so we don't back up and forget.
Yeah, it is, it is definitely that, but no, she's done.
Yeah.
Christian, what do I say?
I guess this is not a good assignment. She said there's two things here, and I only see one.
I have different... Yeah, right.
It's not historical.
Sam, we got more stuff to do. We want to get out of here.
Thank you.
Heritage Commission, I wish you'd been over here.
I didn't have to say how old I was.
It wasn't even started this, and he asked me nicely.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Sorry I kept you up so late.
Maybe I get the...
No, I don't care about you. Phil, you got to get to bed.
I really want to.
You shouldn't have asked me.
Yeah, mine, too.
And the thing is, those law houses, people can't repair.
Mine, too, I'm here, I am.
Doors, probably like this, doors that didn't floor.
Always a pleasure. Stop in anytime.
Yeah, yeah.
And the thing is with everyone's is...
These things don't on? Testing one, two, testing one?
They're on. I know, Gabe had to come up, I had moved my, tell me to move my microphone back.
Well, you got a motion?
No, well, before we do, can we, I just want to, can we please do the meeting minutes? Because, if we wait another two weeks, I don't know how many of us are going to remember, or, especially with the...
So...
So, I have changes...
You're not allowed to miss a meeting, Mrs. English.
I didn't want to.
February 13th.
Yes.
Any comments?
I have some.
You have some?
I do. So, under the board members present by roll call, second line, it's alternate Marty, not Mary.
Not Mary.
Not Mary, oh.
I didn't, I didn't catch that.
It's okay, we work as a team here. On page...
I had it on here, too.
Three of three, line 125, would have spoken up and said it was needed, we need to remove the period after that, and leave, and, add, "Think we can move on." It was a comment I made. So, it should read, "Would have spoken up and said it was needed, and I think we can move on."
I'm not sure what line it was.
And... Right, so we have to remove a period and add, "I think," or "I believe," I can't remember which word I used, but either one's fine.
Okay.
128, Mr. Kennedy stated he was hearing staff say it was required. I believe it's supposed to be not required. Mr. Kennedy just confirmed that, thank you, sir. On the following page, 130, Mr. Staples stated he did not have anything on paper, not in paper, correct?
Staples?
It was you. I said Staples. It's getting late, my apologies.
Well, you want to change that, it does say Staples.
It is Mr. Sharples.
In writing.
Said that he did not have anything in writing.
In writing.
That's better.
And that's what I believe I said.
Okay, thank you. So, in stays, paper turns to writing, Mr. Sharples. I do know who you are, I'm sorry. I'm getting very tired. And...
While we're supposed, yeah.
Then on page seven of 10, 303, Ms. English asked about construction times, T I M E S, not...
Which number did you say?
One, 303.
Yep.
So, instead of ties, it should say times.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
That's all. Gwen, you must have a couple.
Yeah, I have a couple. We'll go backwards, on line 296, it should be Route 111.
Two ninety-six.
Page seven.
Ninety-six.
Two ninety-six, yeah.
Yeah, first thing, Route 111, as long as it's 11.
And, um, on 140, there are other cases which were sent.
Page four?
140, page four, yeah. I hope I didn't say this, but Ms. English noted that there are other cases which were, went back to the Z B A, so sent, probably sent back.
Which were sent, okay.
And then, I don't really understand, 136, Chair Plummer indicated there would be no document by reopening the public hearing, I'm not, do you know what?
What I meant to say is, we had four letters that were received in the planning office.
Yep.
Late.
And I said, because the public's hearing was, had been closed, there was, those were not... Accepted, allowed, that were not allowed.
So, how do we fix that sentence?
No document will be...
Chair Plummer indicated there would be no newly-accepted documents, which would warrant reopening? I don't know.
It's, it's, it's mixed up here, because if we did, if you did accept them, then we'd have to reschedule the meeting and... reschedule the meeting and so on, so, renotice and everything.
No new documents accepted?
Yeah, let's say no new document accepted. Period.
Which would then re.
If it was, reopening the public hearing would be required.
Okay, cut that.
Cut that, Daniel. I think that was it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I'm assuming that the one, two, three, four of us, even those you gentlemen are acting, are probably dealing with these minutes. Although you mentioned in there, so you can, you can vote, yeah, okay.
You were here, man.
I was here.
You get initiated.
All right, so, motion to accept as, as corrected.
I will move to accept the February 13th, 2025 draft meeting as amended.
As amended, yeah.
Second?
Move to second, voice vote, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, the ayes have it.
And if I could just update you one more thing?
Somebody get a motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to update the board because something came up at our last meeting.
Yes.
About parking, and I was supposed to bring it to the select board, and it's with the town manager right now about the parking situation on the set of Pickpocket, so it's being looked into. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, yeah, yeah. David, do you have anything burning we need to talk about?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No. I like that answer.
John, you got a motion?
Would I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, okay, you're a second there? We stand adjourned. Thank you so much for coming and being patient.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.